Okay. I'd like to call the city council meeting to order for July 22, 2014, and we have Mr. Austin Hall, who is, uh, would be a freshman at Captain Shreve High School, uh, who is a Boy Scout, and he will lead us in the pledge.
We're doing the prayer first?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right. Sam will, uh, give us the prayer.
Let's start with a prayer by our chairman again.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your blessings. This is a day that you've made, and for that reason, we will rejoice and be glad in it. Father God, we thank you for all who are in attendance today. We thank you for those who may be watching on television or through other resources. Father God, we just thank you for our great city and all of the wonderful things that are happening here. We lift up the mayor of our city, the members of this council, our families. We lift up the employees of our city who work day in and day out to get the job done for our citizens. And we certainly lift up our citizens, and we pray for their success and for their safety in the things that they endeavor to do. Thank you for allowing us to live in a nation that's free, so we certainly lift up the leaders of our nation, get them with our president, and the governor of this great state also. Father God, have all of us in leadership positions to never forget that we're here to serve in the name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, we're ready for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Collett.
Here.
Mr. Everson.
Here.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Corbin.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Shine.
Present.
Mr. Sam Jenkins.
Present.
Uh, Vice Chairman, I'll accept the motion from you for the minutes for the, uh, administrative conference, Monday, July 7th. City Council meeting, July 8, 2014. It has been moved by the Vice Chairman, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Did I get it right?
And that motion includes the amendment to the July 8 minutes as well.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, did you get that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions? Any more comments?
What was the amendment to the July 8th?
It's just an update, uh, it's a correction to, um...
It's a correction to the minutes. It's a correction to the minutes. Uh, we changed something in the council meeting, but the wrong thing was printed in the minutes, so this is what's...
What was it that we changed?
Uh...
If you click on it and...
It was regarding the, uh, the O'Dell ordinance, um, to add that cul-de-sac.
Oh, okay.
There was just some language in there that was incorrectly, uh, recorded.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. If it's no more corrections or observations, uh, we'll vote at this particular time. All in favor, vote yea. Opposed, is nay. Uh, the minutes, uh, passed with the corrections with a 7-0 vote. Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Shine. I'm going to yield to, uh, Councilman Oliver Jenkins. I know he has a, uh, communications that we would like to do, I believe, right here at the beginning, and so I will yield to him at this time.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's so, that's so nice of you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, if anybody ever says that, uh, you and Oliver don't compromise for one another, we got it on record here saying that you all do.
Absolutely.
Spirit of cooperation is present here today in the council.
Ah, I love that. I love that.
Okay. Well, um, you know, there are opportunities where citizens of our fine city make, uh, uh, make a significant effort to recognize people that do great things for them, and that's why we're here to celebrate today. And I'm gonna invite Amanda Goocher to come up, and she has a presentation which will be supported by, uh, the mayor and myself, so we may walk down to the podium here in just a minute.
Great. Okay, I hope you and the mayor kinda straighten your hair up a little bit, so you all look good on the, uh, on the picture. Okay, give us your name and...
My name's Amanda Goocher. And I live on Captain Shreve Drive in Shreveport.
Okay.
I know Fred loves this picture because it's 25 years ago, and he says, "Oh, my gosh, I can't believe you brought that picture." But 25 years ago today, it was a sunny and scorchingly hot day, and I was thirteen, a thirteen-year-old getting to go on a motorcycle ride with my dad, so everything was right with the world. Carefree, safe. You don't worry when you're a child and your parents are driving you. You just feel like it's all going to be okay. We pulled out of Southfield Apartments on the Southfield Road, passed Albertson's, through the intersection of King's Highway, and then in a flash, nothing was ever going to be the same. I remember it like it was yesterday. I was lying on the median on my left side with my right leg crossed over my left leg. I leaned up to see my leg and tried to comp, and tried to comprehend what had happened. I could see straight into my knee. Blood, dirt, bone, grass, tissue, everything. My leg hung together only by the piece of skin on the back of my knee, and that was it. Residents on the street came out to check on my dad and I. One even brought me a blanket. You see, we were hit by a nineteen-year-old who had run a stop sign and hit us with her car. Sirens blared. And then my angel appeared, fireman and paramedic Fred Johnson. "What's your name, sweetheart?" He asked me. "Amanda," I replied, and he said, "It's all going to be okay." And you know what? I believed him. I don't remember the whole conversation. I know I must have been in shock, as all I kept thinking about and asking for was an I C. So what exactly did my angel do? He provided comfort, security, peace, strength, care, and a stuffed animal. He never allowed me to think I was going to die. He made sure I knew he wasn't going to leave my side, and he didn't. He saved my life. He did, without a doubt. Every Davismen and women dedicate their lives to protecting and caring for us in emergency situations, and each of them deserves our thanks. Today is the day I get to say thank you to you, Fred. I am so thankful that God brought you to the scene of our accident on this day 25 years ago, because not only were you my angel that day, you have been my lifelong friend ever since. I hope you know what an impact you made on me. Thank you for following God's call for your life, and thank you for being there late that night after my first of many surgeries with an I C.
Ah, that's absolutely... Why don't you have Fred to come up? Yeah. And, and both of y'all can kinda cry together.
I know. I can hardly see the paper.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, uh, what you have, uh, just heard is, uh, a story that, uh, can be told...
Sister, why don't you come around and...
Time and time and time and time again, uh, because, uh, what Fred Johnson did on that day 25 years ago, uh, is what the men and women of the Shreveport Fire Department and the Shreveport Police Department do every day. You all heard me say before, um, saying that I share at each of the police and fire, uh, graduation academies that I get a chance to be able to participate in. It is a saying that was offered by, um, Little Flower, Theodore, Fiorello LaGuardia. Fiorello is Italian for a little flower, the mayor of New York City, uh, who said back at the turn of the century, uh, "The last heroic act that a firefighter or a police officer will ever commit is when they stand up before their family, uh, their fellow firefighters and officers and all of the folks of their city, and they take their oath." Because everything that they do from that point forward is just simply a part of the job. And what Fred Johnson did on that particular day was his job, and he did it well, uh, and he did it with a depth of commitment and concern and compassion that has been the hallmark of this department since 1837, uh, and continues, uh, to be so to this very day. And so we thank, uh, Amanda Goocher for giving us a chance, uh, to be able to join her in honoring Fred Johnson and all of the men and women of the Shreveport Fire Department who go out every day and just simply do their job and do it so well. And so, Councilman and, uh, Italian Chief and Amanda and all of the members of this council, I am proud to issue this proclamation on this date, and it reads thusly. It says, "Whereas Fred Johnson joined the Shreveport Fire Department in February of 1981 and has dedicated thirty-three years of service to our community, and whereas Fred Johnson has served as a firefighter, a paramedic, an engineer, captain, and battalion chief, and whereas Fred Johnson has displayed through the performance of his duties the highest standards of personal ethics, professional competency, and dedication, and whereas Fred Johnson has shown kindness, respect, care, and concern, and most importantly, God's love to the members of our community by being the best public servant he can be, and whereas Fred Johnson has been a lifesaving hero to Amanda Bel Goocher and many others. Now therefore, I, Cedric B. Glover, Mayor of the City of Shreveport, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, July 22, 2014, as Fred Johnson Day in the City of Shreveport." And to join me in the celebration of this momentous occasion and witness wherever I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Shreveport to be affixed. Fred, you've given us almost thirty-four years, twenty-five years ago to date, you gave one outstanding day of service to this young lady, and we thank you. And the least we can do is give you your day.
Fred, you wanna, you wanna...
Got something from the, from the chief here as well, and then we'll have you make some comments in the council.
He's letting me read.
That works.
Okay.
That's 'cause they have trouble with their last name.
Okay. Well, yes, I'll say it. Hopefully, I'll say it correctly. Okay, the Shreveport Fire Department Certificate of Commendation, presented to Battalion Fire Chief Fred Johnson. The Shreveport Fire Department recognizes you for your actions during a motor vehicle accident which occurred at Southfield Road and River Road on July 22, 1989. Today marks the 25th anniversary of saving the life of Miss Amanda Goocher. Your EMT slash paramedical skills and caring spirit made you a hero to Miss Goocher and a role model to fellow firefighters. Dated today, July 22, 2014, Tom Self, Deputy Fire Chief Tom Self.
Fred, come on up and say a few words, 'cause you make me feel like an old man. I, Fred Muller, and I worked together at Booker T. And I remember when Fred was running around as a little boy with short pants on, and look at him, he's been on the Fire Department for thirty-three years. Fred, it's time for me to go home.
Well, I'm trying.
Yeah.
Best band in Landisland. Uh, all right. You know, this is, uh, I don't really think I deserve this. I was doing what I was trained to do, and, uh, you know, she was so sweet at the scene. And, uh, you know, I, only thing I did was what I wanted everybody else to do, own the job, take care of somebody's family like I would take care of theirs, you know? And, uh, I mean, I really appreciate this. I really do. She's been saying this to me for years. She wanted to do something nice for me. And I always told her, I said, "Look, you know, this is not necessary, you know, but you went above and beyond today." So, I really appreciate this, Mr. Mayor. Chief Self, Amanda, thank you very much.
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, while he's on his way back to his seat, he, he has two young ladies with him.
Well, three.
Uh, Miss, uh, Miss Sarpe, who served here on this council, uh, I wanna say just a few years ago, it hadn't been that long ago, but just a few years ago, and, uh, one of the school board members, Miss Hardy, who, uh, uh, I'm not gonna say how long she served on the school board, but she served a few years on the school board, and we're just so glad to have you all down, and both of you all have contributed to this community above and beyond the call of duty. Thank you all very much for coming down.
He also has his much younger sister, Miss Paula Johnson, who's here as well.
Well, she's been taking pictures. She's been taking pictures.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we turn it back over to you.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna go now to, uh, council members. Are you all having it?
Right. I'd like to just say one thing, that, uh, it's great to see a citizen willing to put forth that kind of effort, and that it's really appreciated, you know, their opportunities and, you know, certainly us up here do feel the fair amount of complaints about what goes on, and it's great to see some that are willing to thank those people that work very, very hard for us and do great jobs. So I appreciate that, Amanda, for coming up and making that effort. Thank you.
And Fred, we do appreciate the years that you have given to the service, to the citizens of Shreveport and coast. Uh, I guess I can say this, you are truly a Shreveport boy.
Mr. Chairman.
Although I think, although I think some of the people were probably, uh, looking for you to go to Booker T. to play football. Okay. All right.
I certainly want to extend some personal greetings to my constituents down here, Miss Maxine Sarpe and Miss Ursula Hardy and Miss Paula Johnson. So good to see you all down. Just want to say personally hello to you myself. These are some distinguished constituents from District G.
And aren't they all distinguished from District G?
I said, these are some of them.
And let me, let me say this before we go on, uh, uh, Miss Sarpe was married to the late Dr. Joseph Sarpe, who was one of our fine physicians here in the city, not only in the city, but in this state and this great country. And, uh, uh, it would take me all day to start telling you about, uh, Miss Hardy's husband, who, uh, who was an outstanding, who was an outstanding athlete at the, uh, at that great school down the road there, Grambling State University. And I believe Mike might have been on, might have been captain of the first, uh, team that Grambling won, uh, the N A I A National Championship. And he coached for a long time at, at J S Clark Junior High and had some of the best teams, not only in Shreveport, but in the state. And, uh, back during that time, if, if, if J S Clark and other high, other junior high schools like that would have been able to be nationally ranked, I really think that Mike would have had some of the top, uh, football teams in the country. And you know, he slept and ate football, and he bled black and gold, uh, at Grambling. So Ursula, it's so good to, to see you. Both of y'all have a lot of history here, uh, in this city. Thank you all very much for, uh, for coming down. All right. And I'm glad y'all brought somebody with you in order to take some pictures.
Councilman Shine.
Yes.
Also, um, I had an opportunity to go out and actually greet, uh, our guests that were just, uh, speak addressing prior to the meeting, but, um, Councilman Shine, you know, um, you mentioned something about Grambling State University. You know, she was a basketball player, Sister Ursula, Sarah Ursula Hardy was a basketball player at Grambling State University as well. And also, uh, Mayor Glover, I, I learned not here lately that, uh, during one year at Grambling State University, it was, uh, Sarah Ursula Hardy that was, uh, selected as senior queen for Grambling State University. At the same time, my mother was Miss Freshman. So, uh, there's a little history there, uh, with, uh, Sarah Hardy and, uh, my mother as well. As a matter of fact, I think that particularly here, uh, Sarah, uh, Sarpe, that was when my mother actually met my father, because they went to the band, I believe, Conrad Hutchison, to get an escort, and of course, my father was the bandsman that was selected to escort my mother that was selected as Miss Freshman. Also, I've been fortunate enough, uh, since I've graduated from college, I pledged afterwards because I didn't know that I'd be able to make any of the lines on the campus at that time, but it was always my goal to become an Alpha Kappa Alpha. And, uh, what I'd like to share with this audience today, that, uh, Sarah Ursula Hardy is one of the Sarves that crossed me over as an Alpha Kappa Alpha. And so I just want you to know, and, and me crossing over as an Alpha Kappa Alpha, of course, Sarah Sarpe is my Sarah along with other Sarves with Alpha Kappa Alpha. And so again, I would just like to welcome you, and it's always a pleasure. She, Sarah Ursula Hardy was also a mentor for me at Newton Smith, uh, at that time, Elementary School, uh, my first year teaching in Cattle Parish. I think she served as a librarian. And of course, I always kept my eyes on her, and she was always my mentor. And I always told myself, I said, "When I get her age, I wanna be just like her." And just know, uh, she's still wearing, if not three inches, she's still wearing stilettos. And so I have reduced down to two and a half inches, but, uh, she's always been my mentor. And again, it's, it's always a pleasure to have you in the midst, and thank you for coming.
Ron.
Oh, have anything, sir?
Jeff.
I don't.
Mike.
Just a quick reminder that, uh, tonight from six to eight is the meet and greet for the M P C Executive Director candidates at the Hilton. If we, uh, make it out of here in time and if it's in your schedule, I think that's important for us.
Oliver.
I've had my piece.
Sam.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Since we're recognizing a whole lot of folks that we used to mentor, Randy Johnson there, uh, one of the civic and community leaders on the Copper Row, uh, I guess, ma'am, I'm telling my age, but I knew Randy when he was running around with short pants on. That's right. One of my, one of my former students. Randy, it's so good to see you down and appreciate the work that you're doing, uh, in your neighborhood. You've always been involved, and you've always been concerned about trying to improve the quality of life in your neighborhood. So, we're so glad to see you down, and I hope you will continue that, and I hope you will be getting involved in the upcoming, uh, elections in the city. Okay. Thank you, Randy. Uh, if nothing else, Mr. Mayor, we'll come back to you and see what else you have and...
We'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Shine, in the interest of time. It was referenced by Mr. Corbin.
Mr. Mayor, that is so nice of you. If I had some money, we'd go out and eat lunch after, after, after council meetings. Ms. Farnell.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute, Oliver. I'm never being so nasty in my...
Any questions for... Okay, Jeff.
Oh, no, I just, we spoke earlier today. I was just...
I'm sending you a text on that now, sir.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Um, Rose.
Of course. Um, I spoke to you earlier today, Ms. Farnell, regarding a complaint, uh, at Norman and Anna Street, the 1900 block, a problem with snakes and ponds and grass and overgrowth and, uh...
We're following through with that.
We're following through with that.
Yes, ma'am.
And on Oregon Street, uh, as I explained to, I don't know if Stan's here.
He's not here.
Uh, for the past two years, I know that we've gone in and we've actually sprayed behind, uh, the residents that live along Oregon Street, and I don't know exactly what the holdup has been for this past year, but I know there was an issue regarding, um, the prop, the erosion there and as far as us not being able to cut it, but we have gone in and we've actually sprayed it. So we're just trying to find out now, why is it that it hasn't been sprayed? And I've spoke to Stan regarding this as well.
Okay.
Anymore? If not, uh...
Do we have anybody here from Public Works today?
He will be here.
Why are you still there? Uh, thirty, you gotta, you gotta pencil, write this down, please. Thirty Forty-Nine Park Ridge, that's over in the Sunset Acres. Uh, I've gotten maybe seven, eight calls from that location. Evidently, I, I think the people have probably moved out, and, uh, I'm told that the grass is extremely high, and there might be, uh, some furniture stuff that was left, um, in the garage area. Would you send someone over there to check that out and let's see if we can get the grass cut, uh, as soon as we can? I would not, uh, bother the, uh, furniture at this particular point until we contact somebody and, and either leave a notice, uh, to let them know that they have X number of days in order to come and move their furniture. But let's see if we can at least get the grass cut. All right. Mr. Harris just came in. Sam, did you want Mr. Harris to come up at this time?
I just had a list that I wanted to pass on to Mr. Harris.
Yeah.
I still wanted to, I thought something I wanted to give Dorothy.
Okay, wait a minute, Dorothy, just before you go.
Stan may know about it on his way up. I asked about it about a month ago, and I was doing some more checking about the property between Ridgewood Junior High and the Baller Road on the corner of Baird Road, right across from the library. And from what I've been told, that's private property, and they're responsible for it up to the ditch, uh, up to the street, I mean, so...
I can, I, I think I have something on that, and I'll respond to you on tomorrow with that, okay?
Tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's fine. And also, uh, I inquired about, and this may be on the same circumstance, uh, when you come out of Chase Wood subdivision on Baird Road, directly across the street, the ditch line, right there, it's looked bad, uh, and that would be the, from what I understand, would be the homeowner's responsibility to take care of the ditch as well, so...
Seventy-seven oh one Chase Wood?
No, uh, it's on Baird Road.
Okay.
But it's when you're coming out of Chase Wood subdivision, and when you're sitting there at the stop sign, looking straight across the street at the ditch right there. The homeowner should be taking care of that, is what I've been told. It hadn't been cut in fifteen years.
Let me look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
And just one other thing, Dorothy. Forty-eight hundred block of Bethune Hollywood Heights, uh, seems like somebody might be remodeling one of those houses, and they have set some stuff on the outside, and you might wanna get a sign back by there saying that Joe Shine and Dale simply say, "You need to move that trash." Because I think, uh, Dale, I think if, if it's done with, uh, contractor, uh, I believe him right, they're, they are responsible.
They're supposed to haul their weight.
Right. And if not, if we go by and pick it up, we wanna send them a little notice that they need to pay us X number of dollars. So if you don't mind, Dorothy, using your name and mine, 'cause she will do it, uh, put a little sign out, if you can't catch up, if you, if your inspector can't catch up with the guys working there, uh, give them a little something, because it, it makes the whole neighborhood look bad, and, and we don't want our neighborhoods looking like trash dumps. We wanna at least keep them, uh, looking nice.
Councilman Shine.
Yes. And the other thing, Dale, with Dale, the other thing, I live over in that area too. Okay?
Before Stan goes to his seat, Stan, you know, we talked about an issue over on Norton Street, Mr. Nathaniel Francis. Uh, you know, we were supposed to go over tomorrow to actually view the site, and I was hoping that, uh, Ms. Farnell could actually, uh, join us tomorrow, so if you would get with her on a time that we're gonna meet tomorrow, and let me know before the meeting's over, because you know, as, um, yesterday, we...
Street, Mr. Nathaniel Francis. You know, we were supposed to go over tomorrow to actually view the site, and I was hoping that Ms. Farnell could actually join us tomorrow. So if you would get with her on a time that we're going to meet tomorrow, and let me know before the meeting's over, because you know, as on yesterday, we did inform Mr. Francis that we would be meeting over there on tomorrow.
Yeah, I think I talked with her this morning, and I actually set a time for ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock. So Ms. Farnell, if you could join us on Norton Street in the morning at ten, I sure would appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Sibley, do you have any more to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Scott, do you have anything to add? If not, Ms. Sanders?
I would just like to take this time to address a couple of master plan related items on your agenda today. First is the certified local government application. That is actually a stated goal in the master plan as it relates to historic and cultural preservation. That will give the city of Shreveport the opportunity to access grant funding, which actually comes down from the national government. The good news about CLG grant funding is that they accept in-kind matches in terms of staff time. So as your historic preservation moves forward, if their application is approved, they will be able to use their time that they spend on the Historic Preservation Commission as a match toward some of the grant funding that they're applying for. It includes training, outreach projects, a variety of different things that would be covered under that. The second is the Food Systems Master Plan on your agenda. That was reviewed and recommended for approval by the Master Plan Committee, as well as the Metropolitan Planning Commission. It addresses several of our goals related to natural heritage, access to healthy foods, sustainable neighborhoods, but it also addresses job creation and economic development. It is aimed at bringing a new economic sector to Shreveport, to our region really, that does not currently exist, and it aims at creating jobs that don't currently exist in our region. So it does span over several of our chapters with our master plan. Our next master plan committee meeting is August fourth, at which time the committee will be receiving an update on the Unified Development Code. We expect our first draft of the code on August fifteenth. The Draft Review Committee, which consists of MPC staff, city staff, and parish staff, are working internally to establish internal review dates in which we can all, you know, discuss and hash out and come to a consensus in terms of that draft before our consultants come to review it with us. There are a couple of other really important master plan implementation items on that agenda, so with that said, that's all I have.
Okay, anybody having any questions? Yes?
Nothing in particular to what the report was about, but I understand this may be Ms. Sanders' last meeting with us.
Yes, sir, this is my last city council meeting. I have accepted a job in a different state.
Oh, no!
Yes, sir.
Dallas.
And so July thirty-first is my last day with Metropolitan Planning Commission, and I'm...
Where are you going?
I'm going to Dallas.
You're not going to like it, old ass, it's so big and rambunctious and so impersonal over there. You see, if you stay here in Shreveport, you'll have a lot of personal love, right, man?
Certainly.
You know, and...
No historic buildings over there?
Yeah, no historic buildings over there.
Really, planning to be done?
Weather's hot over there in the summertime.
Their buildings will be historic eventually, right?
You won't be there when they're historic.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Well, her stay here has been brief, but it's been very informative. The times I've had an opportunity to talk with you and get some assistance from you, it's always been very pleasant exchange of information. So just want you to know, you certainly will be missed, and we certainly appreciate the contributions that you've made during your time here with us. So it doesn't appear you're going to be going too far, so stick around, you never know what the next administration may want.
That's true.
And they may just reach over there and tap you on the shoulder.
Thank you for your kind words. It's been a pleasure working with all of you.
Council, Sean?
Yes?
I'm sure Jeff would echo some of the words that I'm going to express to Dara. Coming aboard and being selected by this council as the chairperson of the Subcommittee for the Master Plan Group. For those of you that might not know, Dara was very instrumental in helping us to get the Unified Development Code up and running for the city of Shreveport. You've really been a great asset to not only District A, but the entire city of Shreveport. You're really going to be missed a whole lot, as well as your baby. Much success in the near future, and hopefully you'll come back and pay us a visit.
Thank you.
Jeff?
And you're right, I do echo that. Dara, you've been fantastic, and on many levels. I think one of the things that really kind of motivated me running and getting on city council was the master plan process. So I was excited that we were taking the step to hire somebody to work in implementing it, and you've done an excellent job in keeping us focused and doing that. And on a personal level, you're a great person as well, so we certainly will miss you on many levels. So thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Ron?
I hate to see you go, but you're young, and I understand that perfectly, and this is, you know, it's been great having you here. You know, the master plan, we've had master plans several times, it's never gotten off the table, off the floor, it's just collected dust, and I think you've been a huge contribution to making sure this one doesn't become another mothball. So I thank you for that, and I wish you well in Dallas.
Thank you.
I'm just sad she's leaving before the SPI six gets its first chance to being tested. I'm sad for a lot of reasons, but I would certainly like you here in the next month or two. That's a different story, and those that understand it certainly understand.
Thank you. Don't worry, I'm passing on that knowledge to my colleagues, and I'm sure they're very eager to provide you with the assistance that you need.
I hope so. But thank you very much for all you've done.
Thank you very much.
And where's the MPC folks? They couldn't stand to see you say goodbye, so...
Mr. Clark is hiding over there.
Oh, there he is, I see Alan now.
I see the mayor is looking and smiling, and I don't know whether that means that he has a little bonus in you.
I would certainly welcome a bonus.
Good work, and Godspeed.
No mention of the little bonus?
That's usually what Ted...
Okay, that's usually what Ted, he's got a little bonus.
That's all we authorize him to give, so I'm not sure what I'll tell you.
Thank you very much, and we really will miss you, and we enjoyed your time here. But like Ron say, I understand, I got two sons, myself, probably about your age, and one made me cry a few years ago because he wanted to go to Houston, and firstly, I wouldn't give him any gas money to go. I said, "Now, if you're going to Houston, you're going to have to get your own gas money, you know, if you're going to leave Shreveport." So he was telling me about the opportunities, and so I understand, you know, I just hate to see you go.
Thank you.
And, you know, I twenty always comes east from Dallas.
It does.
So, you know, you can always come back home.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on. Mr. Thompson, there is no public hearing today, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
We're now at adding legislation to the agenda. What is that legislation, Mr. Thompson?
We have six items. The first is Resolution One Twenty-Seven. It's a resolution affirming the city of Shreveport's support, endorsement, and recommendation for Amtrak passenger rail service in North Louisiana. It reaffirms a resolution that was adopted a couple of years ago, and it also supports a study of a rail link between Baton Rouge and Shreveport. Resolution One Twenty-Eight authorizes the organization of the Northwest Louisiana Council of Governments as a Louisiana nonprofit corporation, and authorizes the filing of those, of the articles with the Office of the Louisiana Secretary of State. Resolution One Twenty-Nine suspends certain provisions of Chapter Ten. It allows the sale of alcoholic beverages and a parting lot of beers and music at fourteen oh one Fairfield Avenue on August the ninth, until ten P.M., I believe. Ordinance Seventy-Five A will replace ordinance number seventy-five, rather than amend ordinance number seventy-five, we're introducing a new Seventy-Five A, and we will ask you to take Seventy-Five off of the agenda when we get to that point. I believe that Seventy-Five would change the property to B-three, and this changes it to B-two, is that correct? Ordinance number Seventy-Six amends the twenty-fourteen capital improvements budget, and ordinance Seventy-Seven does the same thing. It replaces funds and allows for Phase Two of the asphalt overlay program to be completed. So those are the items that can be added to the agenda today.
At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of adding the above legislation that Mr. Thompson read off to the agenda for today? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? If not, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of adding any of the legislation to the agenda? If not, Mr. Sam Jenkins, I'll accept a motion from you to add...
Move, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Sam Jenkins, been seconded by Ms. McCullough that we would add the above legislation to the agenda. All in favor vote yes, opposes no, legislation has been added with a seven oh vote. Okay, we're now at public comments, and we have Mr. Gary Lash. Did I pronounce, did I pronounce that right?
You did.
Okay, Mr. Lash. Mr. Lash, I have a few English majors up here, and I have to ask them from time to time if the pronunciation and the enunciation of the words are correct.
That's so important.
Gary Lash, I live at eighty-three thirty Ashbourne here in Shreveport, and speaking for, which is now Seventy-Five A, I assume, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Some rezoning of a corner that we intend to purchase, a YMCA intends to purchase, and I'm very much for that. So we were given a gift by a corporate, a new corporate citizen of Shreveport, and we hope some others follow in that. So I am for that. It's in Mr. Jenkins's district, and I hope all of you will support that as we go forward in building this as, not as a building of YMCA community, but a whole campus of about one hundred and fifty acres for the community and some of these things. Appreciate it.
Mr. Lash, I'm going to make a few remarks, and then I'll turn it over to the senior member of this council, Oliver Jenkins. I think you all are doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
And, you know, I think you all are building something out there that's going to draw not only Shreveport, but all of North Louisiana. It really looks good, and I've always admired the contributions of what you all do for the community, so...
Thank you.
Oliver was talking the other day, I don't know whether he meant it or not, but he was talking about coming up with some kind of donation.
I think he should.
And I think, I think he should too, and you know, Oliver is one, is from one of the wealthy families here in town, so I know you all will be getting a good donation from Oliver and his family. Oliver, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Gary sits in the pew in front of me in church, and he looks over and sees how much I contribute.
Oh, okay.
He's got a pretty good idea. But no, I think most importantly, you know, obviously a great, great thing for our community. And really need to start out with just thanking BHP for their significant contribution. I mean, that's, if it's not the largest single contribution to the city of Shreveport, it certainly has been recently. So more than ten million dollar donation, that is, I'll call it kind of the first phase or two, I guess, of the total project. But as Gary points out, there are opportunities for citizens, corporations to join that team to really expand that project of what it truly intends to be. And, you know, certainly, I know Gary is very approachable, they have a great board that's working very, very hard to get those additional dollars, to, you know, really get the full vision in place. And then naturally, you know, it all goes back to the leadership of the organization, like yourself and the board, that have continued to support our community in such a fantastic manner, and you deserve every bit of accommodation for that. So great to see this. I'm personally very excited. I know all the citizens are very excited about it and look forward to it coming to fruition. Thank you.
And Ted Gregg Morrison, I said that he has a lot of wealthy friends, so, you know, he can...
Counting on him.
Right, he can raise a lot of money. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any comments, Gary? If not, Gary, we appreciate it, and you don't have to worry, I can, I'm kind of a fortune teller, so I kind of think this might be a slam dunk.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. We have one more ad. I know you are in a hurry to get back to work, and we don't want to hold you up. You all do such a fantastic job.
Hi, I'm Anne Fumarolo, president of Sciport. My address is out of University Terrace in Shreveport. And usually I come before you, and I'm asking for money or asking for something, but today I'm bringing you a present. As you can see, it's a trash can. Two years ago, we had a horrible, horrible rain at Sciport, and it did in our roof, and we had sixteen of these throughout the building, collecting all of the water in our building. And we have done, while I thank you for allowing us to do a lot of water testing when it rained, having kids guess how full the bucket would get when it rained, which we've done for the last two years with our buckets. We no longer need them because the city got our roof fixed. So I did want to bring them, one of our sixteen buckets that we no longer need, but I also want you to know something, is that we did go to all of our camp kids and explain to them about how the city takes care of us and how the council takes care of us, and we wanted to do something fun, so our camp kids have signed this. And then one of our little camp kids said, "Well, the city will use the bucket. What is the city council going to get?" And so, which is crazy that they figured this out, and I said, "Okay, well, you get them something." So I do have something for the council and the city.
Wonderful.
I want, I wish the mayor would take the can and maybe...
I want you to know, we do not have termites. I'm not real sure where this came from, but I let them go with it. But while this is very lighthearted, we do want to thank you for everything you do for us, and we do let our kids know about it and everybody know about how wonderful the city is to us. It is something. And thank you, thank you, and thank you again, and you'll always have one of our trash cans, so thank you.
And just before you go, anybody want to...
No, but I want the thing, we're going to put it up there so we can see it.
Oh, yeah, that would be...
Mr. Shine, it was nice seeing you in the form, Lex.
Oh, well, thank you.
There you are, it's lovely.
Thank you very much.
We'll put that up there in two weeks.
Yeah.
We'll have to name it.
Dale, make sure you and the mayor take the trash can and put it in between your all's offices here. So when you, when you, when you get some from Oliver, Sam, and you, you know, you sign it, just throw it in there. Thank you all very much. Okay, Mr. Thompson, I'm sorry, Dale, we have no appointments for today.
That's correct, Mr. Johnson.
Okay. Mr. Thompson, please.
We have no items under Section Eight. We can move to Section Nine, regular agenda legislation. The first is one, Resolution One Fifteen. It authorizes the acceptance of a donation from Wells Fargo Premier Asset Services and otherwise provides with respect there too.
What is the pleasure, Thompson?
To move.
Been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor vote yes, opposes no, this piece of legislation passes with a seven oh vote.
One Sixteen authorizes the execution of a certification agreement with the state of Louisiana Department of Cultural Recreation and Tourism.
That's the pleasure, Counsel, to move by Councilman Everson, and seconded by Councilwoman McCullough. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor vote yes, opposes no, legislation passes with a seven oh vote.
One Eighteen declares a citizen's interest in certain adjudicated properties as surplus. The properties are in District A, B, and F.
Second. Been moved by Councilwoman McCullough, seconded by Councilman Everson. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor vote yes, opposes no, this legislation passes with a seven oh vote.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins, try to...
Number One Nineteen declares a citizen's interest in certain adjudicated properties as surplus in Districts A, B, C, F, and G.
So move? So move. Second. Been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. I think Oliver hesitated just a little bit because he saw some other districts involved in that piece of legislation, I think he's been told, don't get involved in other districts. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no, legislation passes with a seven oh vote.
One twenty accepts dedication for Cross Ridge Court and Espinade Unit Six Lake District and otherwise provides with respect thereto.
So move. Been moved by Councilman Carbin, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor vote yes, opposed is no, this piece of legislation passes with a seven oh vote.
No, you're incorrect.
I'm sorry.
Six one.
Six one, who?
Our vote is nay.
Oh, okay. Man goes to show you can't read minds all the time. Everybody's entitled to one mistake. Okay.
One twenty-one authorizes settlement of all claims against the city of Freeport and its employee Jonathan D. Eichner in the matter entitled Stevie L. Hendricks versus Jonathan D. Eichner and the city of Freeport.
So move. Been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilman, was that you, Ron? I'm sorry, Jeff Everson. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no, this piece of legislation passes with a seven oh vote.
Resolution one twenty-two proclaims August seventh as Purple Heart Recognition Day in Freeport and otherwise provides with respect thereto.
So move. Been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilwoman Rose McCullough. Any questions, Sam? If not-
Mr. Chairman, I certainly appreciate the support of my colleagues on this resolution. We have a written resolution, they are trying to schedule a program for August the seventh for Purple Heart Recognition Day. As soon as we can get the location and time down, I will make sure that information get to members of the council. Thank each of you for signing the resolution, and we certainly want to use this opportunity to salute those men and women in military service, both active and retired, who we believe gave an extra measure of devotion, either sustaining an injury or death, in defending the freedoms that we enjoy here in this country. So this resolution helps Freeport to join with the reminder of the state of Louisiana that Purple Heart Recognition Day, and we surely ask that citizens will recognize August the seventh in whatever way that you can to thank and show some appreciation for those individuals who recipients of the Purple Heart.
Sam, again, I think you're doing a fine job and I would just ask you to make sure you recognize Captain, Captain Arthur Thompson. I'm told by Lieutenant Carol Oliver Jenkins that Captain Thomas might have hurt his foot on the way to the mess hall one day. Is that, any truth in that?
It doesn't qualify as a wound for which the Purple Heart is awarded.
Oh, okay.
As I said on yesterday, he's certainly a recipient of the Golden Heart Award.
Oh, okay, okay. That piece of legislation passed with a seven oh vote.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon, I'll read one twenty-three, we will ask that it be introduced and postponed. It should have been on the agenda as a two-reader. It declares the intention of the city of Freeport to proceed with the issuance of not to exceed seventy-five million dollars water and sewer bonds in water mores series for the purpose of financing the cost of acquisition and construction of improvements, extensions, and replacements to the water and sewer utility system of the city, making application to the Louisiana State Bond Commission for the approval of such bonds and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
What is the pleasure? Been moved by Councilman Everson, seconded by Councilwoman McCullough.
Is that it?
Postponed.
Postponed, right.
Isn't that what's required?
Yeah.
Introduce that, please.
Right, right, we're gonna do both at the same time.
Introduce that.
Postponed, right. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor vote yes, opposed is no, this piece of legislation has been introduced and postponed.
Mr. Shannon, there were three resolutions that were added on that can be considered for adoption at this time.
Please.
Let me read them.
Please.
First is a resolution affirming the city of Freeport's support, endorsement, and recommendation for Amtrak passenger rail service in North Louisiana.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Any questions or discussion at this point?
What news for the city of Freeport?
I just, I just hope the mayor consulted with State Representative Robert Rel before he put this together, so we won't have any phone calls after the council meeting.
We would not dare to broach this subject without proper consultation.
Thank you. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no. Dale, you heard it, I got a witness. Okay, this piece of legislation passes with a, did I, I think Oliver probably voted before you left out, didn't you?
No, sorry, he didn't.
He didn't? Okay, with a six and one out of the chain.
One twenty-eight authorizes the organization of the Northwest Louisiana Council of Governments as a Louisiana nonprofit corporation and the filing of articles of incorporation with the office of the Louisiana Secretary of State.
What is the pleasure? Been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Mike Carbin.
Just, just a quick question, and I think I got the gist of this yesterday, but this is just allowing this organization to be considered a five oh one seat three, or what's the difference, what's different between?
Mr. Chairman, we'll have City Mayor Terry Scott to come up and bring to council.
Mr. Everson, members of the council, right now, the organization has never been incorporated, either as a nonprofit or a for-profit corporation. When I spoke with Representative of NLCOG trying to put the legislation together, she informed me that in one of their federal audits, that was something that was pointed out to the board yet again, and so now this is a time that the board is taking the time to try to organize and do some of those housekeeping things that they'd intended to do over the years, that includes going back, organizing the corporation as a proper nonprofit corporation under the laws of the state of Louisiana. Since the city of Freeport, Caddo Parish, Bossier Parish Police Jury, and the city of Bossier City were all jointly involved in the formation and creation of NLCOG back when it was the old Council of Governments, those are the main entities who are primarily responsible and involved in NLCOG, and they're asking all of the local governmental units to signify their support for the organization moving forward to incorporate as a nonprofit corporation.
Terry, thank you very much, is that Joe Saradacolos, you're pink and white?
No, sir, this is red.
Oh, red?
No, no, it's definitely pink. It's definitely pink.
Brave with that many of the A's in the room today.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, let's vote. Legislation passes with a seven oh vote.
Resolution one twenty-nine suspends certain provisions of chapter ten relative to alcoholic beverages on August the ninth concerning the dispensing sale and/or consumption of alcoholic beverages at fourteen oh one.
So move. Second. Been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, seconded by Councilman Mike Carbin. Any questions or discussion at this point? If not, all in favor vote yes, opposed is no, legislation passes with a seven oh vote.
Mr. Chairman, we're now into introduction of resolutions, there are three on the agenda to be introduced. One twenty-four authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the city of Freeport and Wallace Lake Development LLC through with Carruthers Manager for the Facilities to Serve St. Andrews Subdivision, Unit Number One. One twenty-five recommends endorsement and adoption of the Regional Food System Master Plan prepared by We Grow Together for establishing a healthy regional food system and otherwise provides with respect thereto. One twenty-six states the city of Freeport, Freeport's endorsement of Freeport CV Housing LLC anticipated the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Payment Program.
So move for introduction.
Second. All right, it's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins for introduction, been seconded by Councilwoman Rose McCullough. Any questions or discussion at this point? If not, let's vote. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no, legislation is introduced, it will lay over for two weeks, at that time it may or may not be acted upon.
Mr. Shannon, we're now under introduction of ordinancees, before we get started, we would ask that you would remove ordinance number seventy-five and then we will read seventy-five.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins to remove ordinance number seventy-five, it's been seconded by Councilwoman Rose McCullough. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, let's vote. Legislation has been removed from the agenda.
Mr. Shannon, there's also been a request to remand order number seventy-four, and if there is anybody who would like to make a motion-
I'll make a motion to remand seventy-four back to the MPC.
Been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, been seconded by Councilman Mike Carbin to remand ordinance number seventy-four back to the MPC. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor vote yes.
All right, Mr. Shannon, the ordinance for introduction, or seventy-three, it amends a twenty-fourteen capital improvements budget and otherwise provides with respect thereto.
So move for introduction.
We also have ordinance number seventy-five A, it's an ordinance amending, one oh six of the Code of Ordinances, the zoning ordinance by rezoning property located on northeast corner of Knight Street and East Preston Avenue from R A to B two. We also have ordinance number seventy-six, it's an ordinance amending the twenty-fourteen capital improvements budget, and ordinance number seventy-seven, it amends the twenty-fourteen street special revenue fund budget.
Okay, Jeff was a little fast earlier, but the motion has been made by him for introduction and Rose was a little fast, but there was a second on that, so, any questions or discussion? For introduction. All right, all in favor vote yes, opposed is nay. The legislation has been-
Ms. McCullough, try it again.
I'm having problems with my screen.
Give us a hand vote.
Yea.
Yea or nay?
Yea.
Legislation has been introduced with a seven oh, with a seven oh vote, it will lay over for two weeks, at that time it may or may not be acted upon. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we're now into ordinances on second reading and final passage, the first is fifty-three, it amends a twenty-fourteen capital improvements budget. On July the eighth, the council adopted amendment number one, so the motion needs to be a motion to adopt as amended.
So move.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson to adopt as amended, it's been seconded by Councilman Samuel, better known as Sam Jenkins, that's his military, well, Captain Sam Jenkins, military. All in favor vote yes, opposed is no.
I'm sorry, Mr. Shannon, are you voting yes or no?
I'm voting yes. I was just wondering if you picked up on that little, Captain Sam Jenkins.
I wish.
Yeah, military.
Chairman, was that seven zero?
I believe, wait for it to come up.
I think it went away already.
It went away, it came up and it went away. I believe seven oh. One time before I was wrong, Mr. Thompson, when I, when I said seven oh. Okay, with a seven oh vote, it came up.
Number sixty-seven amends a twenty-fourteen general fund budget.
So move.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, been seconded by, is that Councilwoman McCullough?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And as we vote, I would just like to also, I know we said yesterday, but the infrastructure committee did recommend passage on this and do wanna thank the administration for coming with this very comprehensive program, look forward to the start of it.
And thank Mr. Harris for spending the day putting together those numbers for us because-
Which were informative and quickly done.
I think he just stepped out. He just stepped out.
I'm sending for him now, just in case there's any, or any questions or whatever.
No, no questions, just I wanted to say I appreciate him taking the time, getting it to us before the council meeting.
He doesn't understand it was more important to being here than out talking to Jody Lowry about, we don't wanna comment on it until you guys pass it.
Maybe he had a good feel, maybe he got a good vibe from Captain Shannon up here.
Gotta stay focused on what's important.
And I just wanna tell him too that I appreciate them getting Hollywood squared away because every time I would come to a council meeting, Mr. Harris, we just wanna commend you for the, for the good work that you've done, and I also wanna thank you for keeping Councilman Oliver Jenkins off my back every time he goes to the airport, you know, he goes down Hollywood and all those bad holes and all of that, I see you all are doing an excellent job fixing them, so I don't have to worry about him being on my back anymore. Thank you very much, Oliver. Please, Mr. Thompson, proceed.
Number seventy declares a citizen's interest in certain vacant properties as surplus and the citizen's intention to donate certain vacant lots acquired by community development for phase three of Concordia Place Development.
I'm sorry, we have to postpone this, don't we? Can't be adopted till the twelfth?
That's correct.
Move to postpone.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson to postpone. Mike, was that, did I get a second from you?
We can.
Thank you. We got a second from Councilman Mike Carbin, y'all see that? Okay, so, any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, let's vote, opposed is no, be postponed, piece of legislation passes with a seven oh vote.
Number seven one amends ordinance number one fifty of twenty thirteen, which amended and reenacted section ten dash one seventy-two of the code. This allows the Sunday sales in certain sections of the city and it removes the-
Sunset.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, been seconded by Councilman Mike Carbin. Dale, you know I'm a little reluctant, you know, wherever there's alcohol, you know how you and I are.
Yes, sir. Good method is that we are.
Yeah, so, all in favor vote yes, opposed is no, piece of legislation passes with a seven oh vote.
Mr. Chairman, number seventy-two also needs to be postponed, but it declares a citizen's interest in certain vacant lot property as surplus and our intention to donate certain vacant property acquired by a community development via foreclosure to help for the homeless.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor vote yes, opposed is no, okay, the motion has been adopted.
Mr. Chairman, those are all of the items that are on the regular agenda for consideration today. Based on the discussion yesterday, there are no items to be pulled from the table to be voted on today. The property standards appeals were all decided yesterday, and we're now under section C Metropolitan Planning Commission Appeals and Zoning Board of Appeals. We have one to be considered today.
Mr. Thompson, just before you go to that, I don't wanna neglect any of the council members because I serve with the pleasure of the council members, do you all have anything that you'd like to pull off the tape? If not, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson, proceed. Please.
If there are no objections, BAC forty-four fourteen, we had a letter withdrawing the appeal in that matter, and so a motion to remove it from the agenda would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins, that we would remove this from the agenda.
We did have a public comment on it.
Who was the public comment?
Mr. Sam Emir.
Sam, we'll get to you in a few minutes. Okay. Okay, legislation has been adopted with a seven oh vote.
It was removed from the agenda.
Yeah, removed from the agenda.
Mr. Shannon, we're now to BAC thirty-six fourteen, the south side of East Kings Highway, three hundred and fifty feet west of Yuri Drive, and I don't know whether you want the Metropolitan Planning Commission or how you want it.
I'd certainly like to give the two people involved in this case the opportunity to come speak. Mr. Tran, I don't know if you wanna start, or Mr. Nader, you wanna start? Either one, come forward and microphone and, okay, Mr. Nader, if you come forward and then afterwards we'll kinda give the opportunity of what's gone on with the MPC staff since this process started.
Good afternoon. My name is Edward Nader, I own Nader's Gallery at the corner of East Kings Highway in Yuri. I'm here today in reference to the property at five thirty East Kings Highway, it's operating as Folemoree. The property- The property abuts me on both the south side of his property and the west side as well. In the fall of last year, the property owner did a massive reconstruction, adding about fifty percent of the current building space, and paving the entire lot, and was not required by the MPC staff to submit a site plan. I'm confused why this property was exempt from the Shreveport Code of Ordinances requiring a site plan to be submitted. The property owner was exempt from paying a fee for the site plan, which was required by law, but I had to pay one to come today, which just kind of continues to add insult to injury, because a lot of time and money has been spent on this whole issue. My question is why the laws and ordinance didn't apply to his property, really. Had a site plan been submitted, I would have had the, been entitled to the opportunity to make my concerns be heard by the zoning administration, but I was denied those opportunities and rights. There was never a posting or a request for zoning variance, no case number. Had they, had a site plan been submitted, I think some professionals would have been involved, putting their input in with regards to planning, engineering, et cetera. The so-called site plan that I obtained from the Metropolitan Planning Commission from Mr. Clark and Mr. Jean were actually ZBA plans for Church's Fried Chicken, and were dated two thousand and one. And no site plans for the MPC for the development of this particular property was ever put in place. The site plans that I did get, which I don't know if you can put them on the overhead, they did not take into consideration the land that was expropriated by the Louisiana Department of Transportation for the expansion of Highway One. I lost a good, I don't know, twenty-five or thirty feet of my parking lot, and so did they. But on their proposed site plan, it showed all of these parking spaces, which, I mean, were just going to be ultimately highway. I think the property was erroneously issued a permit, but instead of halting the construction, the staff decided to take their errors and continue to cover them up and push them through, and no one ever said to stop, go back to the MPC, and let's look at the site plans. Because according to the MPC, I have a long email chain from Mr. Clark that went on for two months, and, you know, issuing my concerns, issuing my concern. According to the Planning Commission, a site plan or occupancy license was never brought in front of them. So apparently, Mr. Clark took it upon himself to waive the site plan requirement and misrepresented himself that he had the authority to do so, and I'm not so sure that he does or does not. But the ZBA delivered, was not delivered accurate information when I brought it in front of their appeals board, and he also expressed that the property was exempt from landscaping, which I don't understand why that is either. It's my understanding that any time a new construction or more than ten percent of a property is expanded, or a property is expanded by more than ten percent, all of these ordinances kick in. And according to the landscape, there should be like a five-foot buffer parallel to the street. Fifteen percent of the front lot should be devoted to landscaping. There's no landscaping at all. There's no trees. There should be one tree for every thirty feet of foot frontage, street frontage, and there's not a blade of grass. And I just can't seem to understand why this gentleman and his property was exempt from this, and the rest of us have to adhere to these laws and guidelines. The staff declined to enforce the ordinance and allow the property to be, the property owner to build the building, and then now I'm, like, again, I'm still dealing with this issue, and I've contacted, when this first started back in November, I contacted the mayor's office, code enforcement, permits and inspections, city engineering, Councilman Corbin, Councilman Jenkins, everybody who's been aware of this has been going on. But it, four or five months passed, and they ultimately got their occupancy license and are operating. There are a lot of details, and if anybody wants them, I'll be happy to share them with you. I have a lot of photographs, I have a lot of correspondence, all of that. Be more than happy to share those, but I don't think this is really necessarily a platform. My whole point is that I think that it should have gone in front of the Metropolitan Planning Commission, and it should be, should have been handled correctly and through the proper procedure, and that was not done. It has ultimately negatively impacted our business on more than one level, not limited to, like, concrete was poured, they poured an entire concrete slab and overlaid the entire parking lot about eight inches higher than ours, and it dumps water under our property and makes it where the water does not drain properly. We've had instances of flooding, and engineering said that they were never sent out there to take a look at it, and that it was not correct. There are loose curb stops that are causing people to drive into our building. There's not sufficient parking, there's not sufficient backup turning lanes, et cetera. And we also have a right of ingress and egress that continually is blocked because of the way the parking lot is configured. It's just a poor plan. And there's just physically, and if there's any way we could put this on the overhead, there's just physically no way that you can do, there's one way in and one way out, but our right of ingress goes in, so the two lanes will, they just don't, they won't make it. I mean, there's just, it's physically impossible to negotiate that. So cars are forced to back up onto Kings Highway. That's creating traffic hazards and issues and a big mess. This is, and it's creating parking nuisances for all of the businesses. Again, the application was never in front of the MPC, and the ZBA didn't have a benefit of an accurate staff report. And quite frankly, I just feel like a law's been broken here, and, you know, I was denied my right to have this conversation with the proper authorities at the time. I don't really understand why I have to appeal to the city to enforce their own laws, and I also feel like, you know, the master plan that we've all talked about and are all so excited about, it just seems somewhat pointless if we're not going to enforce it. So I'd also like to have my filing fees for today refunded as well, because I feel like I should never have, it should not have ever gone this far. So...
Are you able to get that? So, that's really pretty much it. I could certainly pass this around, if it was easier. Hey, there.
Because the back of this property is behind it.
So, just for the history of it, this is what I achieved when I went in the first day, which was a site plan for churches, and all of this is gone now. The city owns, I mean, the state owns this. The second site plan was this one, was not accurate and not to scale, and this was the third one, which, if you can see, these cars, and these are not the same size, so there's no way that's a feasible site plan. And if it's not, my understanding, it should be to scale. This is the one, the last one that was provided, and as you can see, they have to come in this way, out this way, and out here, but their car's parked here and here, so there's no way I can get in or out of my own property. It just seems absurd that it has gone to this point.
Councilman Jenkins?
I'd certainly like to give the current property owner the opportunity to speak, if he'd like to. You don't have to, if you don't want to. Mr. Nader, do you mind just kind of staying up here, just so we don't, I mean, you can sit down on the front row somewhere, I'm just saying.
Okay.
Let me ask one question. Does the MPC get to defend their position, did they issue a permit, or should they...
Do you want to come to the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Does the MPC...
Say your name and...
I'm sorry, Greg Johnson, on behalf of Mr. Tran. My question is, does the MPC get to defend their position since they issued the license? Because if so, we'd like them to go first, and then we'll go last.
I'm certainly intending on bringing up Mr. Jean to come up here and explain the procedure from that perspective. I know you think this is a court of law, it is not, but it doesn't matter to us.
I'm sure it is not a court of law, because there's no judge here. But let me, okay, I'll go ahead and go first there.
Trying to give her a chance to speak.
Name, two Tran, two seventy-six Pomeroi Drive. I'm the property owner at five thirty East Kings Highway. I don't see what's the reason was to be here, first of all, because I have done everything to be a good citizen, to do it right, to provide a job place for Shreveport, and have a good-looking place for the city of Shreveport to look at. And first of all, the reason why he was complaining, because he didn't have his own right of way that is supposed to be on the west side, he was using my side, the east side, to use it to his property. And he had his own right of way to his property, which he blocked off, and I don't know if he pulled permit or not to do it or not, but if he did, I don't see why the city would allow him to do that, because I have proof right here that he blocking up his property up, so, and to use a patio for his business, and... Right there, on his middle entrance way for him to, so he wanted to use my, use the auto, leaving trouble. I'm his neighbor, I don't know see why we have to read right here and stuff. And for the waters, I just want to make a place to look good, and I tried my best to remodel the place to look good. And I did have, I did have everything, I paid the permit fee, all the fee, and the MPC and I worked together. I just, the restaurant square footage is real small, just add a sixteen-foot to my restaurant, so it can have sitting area to sit in, so people can have a place to sit and eat. It's a small, little business, and for his way, he's talking about for my concrete to be pulled and eight inches over him, that's my current right there, and I have tests with the water, and this is where his level, property level at, right there, and it didn't go to his property at all. And he just wanted, and that's another picture where the water flowed to, to the street, not on his property. And that's, I think I did what the law say, and he had no proof to say that to me, or we shouldn't be here at all. That's all I have to say.
All right.
God bless everyone in here.
Mr. Johnson, do you want to add anything?
Well, I'm representing Mr. Tran on this matter, and I'm well aware of that we're not in the court of law, but the courts make it clear that there are certain rules of evidence that should be followed, and the person bringing an allegation should be the person who has the burden of proof, and Mr. Nader has only alleged, well, I'm not sure exactly what he alleges. He doesn't say that the parking is inadequate for the amount of square footage, because the ordinances are very clear, and they say, for this amount of square footage, you need this amount of parking. He doesn't say that he doesn't meet that burden. He claims that there are problems with the elevation of the new pavement that my client laid. He doesn't show what, how high the pavement is, or any evidence that it's actually running on this property. He says that there's no room for people to get in and out. Well, he doesn't show that it's out of compliance with anything that's in the city ordinance, so it's really just, Mr. Nader seemed to be unhappy for reasons other than my client not being in compliance. And the real reason is, once my client built his property and renovated it, it cut Mr. Nader out of a right of way that he was using illegally. Mr. Nader was using the side closest to his building. Once my client renovated his building and had to change his parking, Mr. Nader was no longer free to use this, let me make this clear, illegal, illegal right of way. And now, since he can't go over there to five oh one Texas Street and beat us, because the right of way that he has makes him go around my client's property, he thinks he can get around it by getting an order, taking away my client's permit. But he doesn't have any real evidence at all that my client has done anything wrong, or he doesn't even, well, more than he doesn't have any evidence, he didn't even offer any evidence. He just, he's just going on and on about how he doesn't like the way, there's not enough room to get around, or the parking doesn't look adequate. And this whole idea that there's no, no plans were given is just completely untrue. Even if there were no plans given, there was an appeal to the zoning board when we did introduce plans, and the members from the zoning board came up and said that the plans were in compliance, and they went out to the property site, and the site is in compliance. So while Mr. Nader states that he doesn't know why he's here, he hasn't alleged anything that gives us the, well, puts us in a position that we have to defend anything, because he hasn't made any real allegations of noncompliance on behalf of my client.
Yes, Mr. Tran.
I want to say this right here, I want everybody in here to know, and everybody out here to know, that he, don't matter how much he harassed me and intimidated me, I'm not going to give up my land for the way he wanted it. He want me to trade off my land with him, so he can get off his right of way. So, I'm looking at you right now, you're not going to get what you want. Don't matter how much you harassed me and intimidated me. Thank you.
Okay. Now, Stephen Jean, would you mind kind of coming up, and, you know, he and I, as well as a member of the MPC, we've had engineering assist us with trying to go through what potential violations are out there, and kind of the sequence of events, and how we got to where we are today, and I'll let Stephen summarize that, and certainly describe some of the efforts we've made at this point.
I want to start from the beginning, when I was aware of this issue was, Mr. Nader had contacted our office in regard to a permit issuance in the property next door. I did go and look at what was issued downstairs, and it did not appear that the right of way was accurately depicted on the plan. We'd worked with, one of the first things we did was get with Mr. Nader and requested he hire a surveyor to go out to the site and to, and we had gone to engineering office and obtained from Mr. Westerman the right of way location of what was actually acquired to widen Kings Highway, and asked for him to get a surveyor to actually pinpoint that locations and submit a site plan that indicated that. So we, basically at that point, had worked with the permit department to, and requested he cease and desist what he's doing until he complied with bringing us information. He did hire a surveyor, he did, at one time, you could actually see the stakes out on the property where he had located the stakes. Then he submitted a plan, that plan was reviewed by our zoning administrator, Mr. Clark, who approved that. When, after that was approved, Mr. Nader had indicated there were still numerous issues with that plan. I went out with Mr. Clark. There were some parking spaces, it was very obvious that those parking spaces, when you get out in the field, did not work. They were eliminated, they were on the rear side of the property, they were parallel parking spaces. Mr. Tran put up signs that indicated that no parking was allowed, removed those, removed the striping from that location. There was another parking space located near the roadway that was eliminated. That striping was corrected. We, so we had worked with him on numerous occasions in the field to take care of deficiencies that we saw. When this was appealed, I was, the actual issuance of the certificate of occupancy was appealed, I've asked one of the staff members to double-check all of the spacing and the aisle widths, and compare that with ordinance to be sure that that was in compliance. And almost verbatim what this inspector told me, he said, "Was very tight, but I can't, but it does meet ordinance." So when we got further into the appeal process, I had another staff member go out and with a measuring wheel and look at the plan and make sure that all the striping was accurate and prepare a site plan, and I got the same answer, very tight, but it does comply with ordinance as regard to the space requirements, number of spaces, and accordance with the square footage. After consultation with Councilman Jenkins, it was requested we might have someone else look at this, just to get an idea, you know, maybe another party to look and see, and basically paraphrasing once again, it's very tight, but the only ordinance provisions that could be questioned was whether or not it complies with landscaping ordinance, and whether or not it complies with the stormwater detention ordinance. So I can let Mr. Westerman speak to his findings as regards to stormwater detention, and all... as regards to stormwater detention and also whether or not there is a problem with, with sheet flow or onto the property. When you look at the, Mr. Nader is absolutely correct. When you look at the ordinance as it relates to expansion of more than 10% of the floor area, even if there's an existing parking lot, it does require the landscaping. What has happened in this particular case, the landscaping that was once located on the site was omitted because of the widening, widening of the highway. So there was the required landscaping there. And once the, so in the widening process, that, that would no longer be there. So Mr. Clark made, made the judgment call to, to have alternative landscaping provided, you know. And you don't see that today because it's still kind of, it's still partially done along the right of way anticipating the widening of King's Highway. So that's where we are today. I would, you know, invite Mr. Westerman to speak up, speak in regard to his findings and when he went out onto the site, if you'd like to.
Is he still, is Robert still in here?
Yes.
Hiding behind the column back there.
I guess for the record, I'd like him to come up.
Is the, is the chief here?
Yeah.
It's unrelated matter.
Okay. In reference to what Stephen Jean was telling you, I was requested by Mr. Jean to go out and visit the site and actually visited the site with him. I did observe that the parking lot issues, as they discussed, with the width of the spaces, the narrowness of the aisles, it was an extremely tight situation. Can be done depending upon how careful the drivers are. The other issue about drainage, whereas the picture that was shown by the client indicated that the drainage was running all the way down to the street, in fact, what I observed, there was a minor amount of water that did drain onto Mr. Nader's property. Very small amount, very slow drainage. There was some water that ponded for a minor amount of time adjacent to his building. This is what I observed on the site. Was it flooding the situation? No, sir, it was not. The other thing that I noted was the parking lot was elevated approximately four to five inches above the existing parking lot. Also, in addition to that, there was no additional impervious area added to the site, which meant that there was no increase in what the old potential runoff would have been. That is why detention was not looked at in that case. Other than that, those were my observations of the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so Stephen, I got one last question for you. With regard to the landscaping, so now we've got the widening of the street. So once that's resolved, will there be a future requirement? Or is there a way to put a future requirement in there for him to comply with landscaping at that time?
With the parking the way it is today, I'm not sure we can get to the letter of the ordinance. We may be able to get alternative compliance with the ordinance. And that's what's something that, that Mr. Clark and I had discussed. And we'd be happy to, to work with them to, to achieve that to extent to possible.
Okay. And I guess this is really a question for Julie. If I had a motion associated with that, should I include that in my motion? Or is that something left at the staff level?
Tell me again what you're wanting to require as far as the landscaping?
I'm wanting them to go back in, once the existing width of King's Highway is resolved with the new intersection, that then best efforts are made to comply with the landscaping portion of the ordinance that would be required. But it seems a little foolhardy to make them do anything right now if they're going to lose that part of their frontage.
It doesn't make sense to require it to be done. Yeah, I don't, I don't know why you couldn't include that, what you just said in your motion.
Okay. Anybody else up here?
I do have a question.
Have it.
Stephen, because there's been multiple site plans on this that we've seen today, when King's Highway is widened, how close will some of these parking spots be as it's actually built?
I think there's at least one, Councilman Corbin, that you're, that is awfully close to that. And then we could, we could look at that again and see how that's functioning. I know that there was one that if, there's no other way that it could be utilized without backing directly into the road. And that was eliminated. There could be another one. We could look at it once again to see if, you know, once we know exactly how that lays out.
But assuming that when the widening project is finished, there's sidewalks in place and all that, they'll lose at least one parking spot?
That's possible. Yeah. We could, we could go back and look at the numbers and relook at, I know that there, it was either 16 to 18 spaces. There may been, there may be some room there that we could, we could look at that space.
And my other question, Mr. Nader mentioned that besides the site plan issues initially, that this never went, never was anything other than an administrative review. Is that normal in a case like this?
I would say no, sir. That, that is not normal. This is something that, that occurred in the issuance of the actual permit. We were made aware of it after permit issuance. You know, if, you know, if the question was, was it brought in previously and others, and we, you know, we were able to evaluate that, we may have, especially now, if I was to look at it, I probably would say it would go in front of the board. But it had already been issued at the time I was made aware of it. And we were just doing our best to make sure this was in compliance as to the greatest extent as possible.
And that's a permit that was issued by another department?
Yeah, we, we were part of that process. The permitting desk, we have a person that reviews there. The, the plan that we have, and obviously this was, turned out to be factual. Mr. Nader is correct. The plan that we had was not an accurate plan. So we began to work to get an accurate plan, more accurate plan than what was initially submitted. The original plan submitted did not indicate the actual proper right of way that was actually acquired as a part of the property. So we, that's when we insisted that we would get an amended plan that, and then began to, began to work, to work on that and make sure it did work. But yes, I will say, you know, we, you know, using a golfing term, I would love to have a mulligan on the release of that, of that permit. And that's all we've done is tried our best to make sure that, we've had a lot of cooperation from Mr. Tran. Everything that he's been asked to do, he's done, including restriping and things of that nature.
No. Pleasure.
Okay. So here's my motion. And I could certainly understand Mr. Nader's dissatisfaction. But I mean, there's a lot, a lot of water that's gone under this bridge. And this is kind of where we are today. And I'm just trying to make the best of that. My proposal would be to deny the appeal, grant the refunding of his appellate fees, make a requirement that best efforts to comply with the landscaping ordinance are met in cooperation between the MPC staff and Mr. Tran, once the resolution of the King's Highway project is, is, you know, goes forward with the final plans or what have. Because it's been in design so many times, I would hate for them to start on something today and have that design change. Is that fairly clear on what my motion is?
I think so.
I will second the motion.
Okay. Mr. Thompson, did you get that motion? It has been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Did you want to repeat that, Mr. Thompson? So we could, was to deny the
He probably did.
I know the, the main part is to deny the appeal and, to deny the appeal and look at refunding.
Is appellate fee?
Is appellate fees. Mr. Nader, we're going to give you one more shot at it. And then we're going to follow through with the, with the motion. You want to come follow right now?
And if I missed something, that is.
I just would like to just respond to some of the comments he made. I didn't go into the details about, because this isn't the platform for that. The parking spaces are not legal. They're not compliant. I think it needs to go back to the MPC, even if it remains open or whatever. And they need to revisit that and be sure that they're accurate parking spaces. You should have 12 to 14 feet to back up. And in some places, you have less than 10. There are wrecks every day as a result of this for people backing onto the street. I think right now, we're doing exactly what we've done for the last eight months and glossing over it because we don't really want to mess it up. And I know that y'all are doing the best you can with what you have to work with. But I also think that, I want to show you a picture where the, where the flooding did happen and it does continue. Well, I'm not going to do that. But I just think that it needs to revisit, we need to revisit some of this because quite honestly, I need to make this perfect, crystal clear to you guys and you guys as well. They have used the defense from the beginning that I'm mad that my right of ingress and egress has been taken away. It is not. It's recorded legally in the courthouse. It will never be taken away. That's all beside the point. And whether it's on the east side of the property or the west side of the property, I don't care. I just want to be able to access it. And with this site plan, I'm unable to access it. And on a daily basis, we're going to have to have cars towed and people, the police called and all of that on a regular basis. And I think at this point, it needs to go back to the Metropolitan Planning Commission, let the commission itself take a look at the site plan, modify it so that it's a workable site plan. I'm not trying to compromise this man's livelihood. That is the last thing I want to do. And I'm very happy to have a viable business next door. I'd much rather have a business next door that's productive, bringing traffic to our neighborhood, keeping it clean. He's done a nice job. The building looks nice. I don't have a problem with him being there. I just have a problem with the way the whole thing was handled from the beginning to now. And the thing is, we keep glossing over it and glossing over it and glossing over it. And I'm going to continue to be able to access my property regardless, but it's going to create a living hell for me on a daily basis unless this site plan is modified and is addressed correctly so that people can drive in. Plus, I have to give up part of my property for Highway One to create a turning lane so that we can move traffic through the city more freely. Meanwhile, he's allowed to have cars to back onto King's Highway and to stop that. It's counterproductive and it does not seem fair. So if that's the case, then we're going to be able to put, then we should be able to put where people can back onto King's Highway as well. And when I come to the MPC and ask to do that, y'all aren't going to let that happen. And while Mr. Jean said there's only one parking space that's going to be compromised, according to this last site plan that I put up, it's not even accurate as how they're parking today. There's going to be four parking spaces. It's a very minimal. And they have 16. That brings them down to 12 for a 1,700 square foot building. And I'm correct, on a restaurant, the ratio is one to 100. So I think he needs 17 spaces. He's at 16. He's going to end up at 12. Now, currently, right now, they're parking between eight and 10 of their cars on a daily basis of the staff and the owners across the street at the future site of the Whataburger. They have four or five at CVS. They don't use ours because of the obvious reason. But when those two people, CVS will get enough and they'll move them out. And Whataburger told me they absolutely won't be part of that. Where are those cars going? Well, next door. It's the closest place. So I think it needs to go back to the MPC. The MPC themselves should look at that, not the staff. And they should get a viable plan that works for the business itself and the surrounding community as well.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
Let me, let me say one other thing.
Okay.
So just so we're clear, we, that is the MPC staff and myself, have been in communication with the MPC. And we have asked them to review this. And if there was anything that they could see themselves doing back at the MPC. And they have said, they've asked, who has been out there to resurvey, remeasure, et cetera, et cetera? We've had four different people out there. And all of them say the exact same thing. It is tight, but it meets the specifications of the ordinance. They, from their perspective, have conveyed to us or to me that they do not have an opportunity, they have nothing that they would do differently at this point. So I appreciate your perspective. I still stand by my motion, but I'm open for anybody that wants to propose something differently. But I will assure you, that was given very much consideration. We also had an extra two weeks or a month to deliberate on this because of the timing issues, right? I mean, so, you know, I'm not sure
I mean, I was under the impression though, that a parking space should be 20, 19 feet at the shortest. And some of them are 16 feet. So that's, I don't know how y'all, anyone gets that it's in compliance. If they're supposed to have 12 feet to back up or 14 feet to back up on certain angles, and you only have 10, that's simply, I don't understand how the MPC, if they could just explain to me how I'm misreading their ordinances, that their laws are written. I don't, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic by any means. I'm trying to be as respectful as I can. But I'm kind of at a point of aggravation and frustration and a little bit of disgust because it's written, a law is written here. And I go exactly off of that. And I have it exactly outlined. And I go out and I measure and it doesn't fit. Well, how can they do anything different? Well, they can't because it's too late. They've let, they've let it out of the gate now. And so nobody wants to admit fault and go in and say, "Let's reformulate this and figure out the best solution." I mean, they're just going to keep doing it and all day long. I mean, I, at least once a week, there's an accident out in front from somebody backing on that can't get out the other way they're supposed to go out. It's just not a feasible plan. And I showed you on my site plan where it shows them going around. And there's six spaces that if, in fact, I use my right of ingress and egress, they're going to have to jump over cars. I just don't, it doesn't make a bit of sense to me. I just, I guess I need clarity on it, or maybe I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer. But I don't understand how that works. And I don't mean that in a sort, any sort of, I mean it with all due respect, I just don't get it.
Mr. Nader, I'm sorry, but we're going to have to bring this to a vote. And Marvin, you know how it is, don't you? There you go. You understand how it is.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming down. And because you have the phone number of your councilman and you can call him at any time. And he is a very compassionate man. And I know he will be willing to continue to listen to you. But at this time, I'm going to call for the vote. And all in favor of the motion that was put forth by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, vote yes for it. If you disagree, vote no for it. And, and we'll live with it. It's been a, one, two, three, four, five. Did I count that right? Five for the, for the motion and two against. So the motion passes with a five to two vote. We appreciate you all coming down and stating your case. And Reverend Mays, you know, it happens like that sometimes. Sometimes you win and sometimes you lose. So we appreciate it. Mr. Thompson, we will follow your direction and go from here.
There are no other appeals that are on the agenda. We're now under reports from officers, boards, and committees.
Councilman Jenkins, if you don't mind it, we will start with Mr. Thompson unless the two of y'all have a different opinion.
Start with him. Go right ahead.
Okay, okay.
Do you want to start with the court report?
Yes.
I would be happy to if I had one.
Oh, okay. Wow. Any, any council member?
I'll just give a
Yeah, I think it kind of gave a little bit earlier, but we'll come back to you.
Yeah. So the Infrastructure Committee met yesterday and made several recommendations for action, some of which were taken today on, to approve the, the street sweepers was the primary discussion, although there were subsequent discussions in the meeting regarding the Minor Osteoeral Asphalt Program, which you see we made a recommendation to move forward today with that. And also, there were some drainage projects discussed as well that came from citizens that had brought those to the meeting. Overall, it was really a pretty productive meeting. And I think we got a lot done. So I appreciate everybody's attendance and cooperation.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, just to remind everyone that the Audit and Finance Committee is going to be meeting August 11 at 2:00 p.m. Representatives from BKD, that's the auditors, they will be there to discuss the 2013 external audit. The reports have already been emailed to council members. The members of the committee is Councilwoman McCullough. Members of the committee is Councilwoman McCullough, Councilman Carvin, Councilman Everson, but of course, all is welcome to participate, attend, and be informed.
What time is that, Mr. Mayor?
2:00. It's Monday, August 11th. That will be right before our administrative meeting on that day.
Okay.
If we have no more reports, I will accept a motion at this point to the council to resolve itself into a committee of a whole.
Come in.
Been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. All in favor of vote yes, opposed is no. Okay, the council has resolved itself into a committee of a whole. Can I, will accept the motion at this time for the approval of the minutes of July 8th.
Go move.
Been moved by Councilman Ron Welk, been seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. All in favor of vote yes, opposed is no. Minutes approve, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shine, members of the council have limited communication at this point in the interest of time, just simply want to express appreciation to all the folks who came out last Monday, on the 14th, to participate in the initial phase of the cross-bayou quarter study effort. You all may recall that this is an area-wide planning grant, that we have gotten courtesy of the Environmental Protection Agency. I think it's for about $300,000, that's giving us an opportunity to develop an action plan, a vision to advance forward for the redevelopment of the cross-bayou area, which is essentially the region that is east of North Common, and north of Caddo Street, running all the way to the Red River, the area that is behind Big D's Barbecue, that encompasses general scrap, behind the Shreveport Convention Center, behind the Hilton Hotel, all the way down to the water's edge, and on eastward to the Red River. Great opportunity for us to be able to transform that into an area that would be a great place for residential, for recreation, and hopefully some retail that will contribute to our tax base as well. Also want to express a great congratulations to Shreveport's own Jay Williamson, a young man who is from the city of Shreveport, who is participating in BET's Sunday Best, carrying on the tradition, with Des Durand, and Cole Vossberry, and Will Jones, and so many others who have gone on to the national stage to display talents that they developed and honed right here in Shreveport, that they're now sharing with the nation and the rest of the world. I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Shine.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And I'm going to skip over communication with council members just for a minute, and go to public comments, and I'm going to ask Reverend Mays to come up. I want to speak about the Police Department, and Reverend, come up. Chief, I'm going to ask both of y'all to come down and look close, where you can hear Reverend Mays.
Thank you. I need him close to me. I need him, as well as all of you, that, first of all, let me give my name. Pastor Mays, New Macedonia Baptist Church, 335 East Azalee, Shreveport, Louisiana, to the Chair, and to the Vice Chair, and to our Mayor. There is, it is sad to say, but it is true, that there is asserted effort in our community to discredit, to disallow people who come down here, speak on issues that concerns the community as a whole. I am saddened by it, and I know Brother Marvin is coming up probably after me, but there is a young man, and I'm glad the Chief is here to hear this, there was a young man that was riding a bicycle just recently, and all of a sudden, he gets, because I guess apparently no lighting on the bicycle, he gets pulled off the bicycle and beaten. So, you know, this kind of behavior is the reason why I'm going to keep coming down here. There is nothing that nobody can do to me, and let's put this on the record, and make it perfectly clear. There is nothing that nobody can do to me, to stop me from being concerned about God's people, and doing the will of God. Now, this is not an indictment on the Police Department, because I know we have some good officers, but this is an indictment on all the crooked officers, whether they be visa detectives, or whatever, that would make up information, and do asserted lies on individuals that they know that is trying to do that which is right. I feel that is, Councilman Shine, that is wrong, I feel Mayor Glover, that it's wrong for these kind of things to be done within our city. And I think that we need to take a look at some of these people, and what they are doing, and how they are operating within the Police Department of the City of Shreveport. Now, I got some police that's referring, I think we need police officers. I think that we need to just continue, and the Chief is doing a great job at this, weeding out these officers that are taking it up on themselves to be judge, jury, and executioner. That's what I'm sick of. And I know that's what the public is sick of. And most people, they say they get tired of hearing this. Well, let me go on the record right quick and clear up something, something that tried to happen to me, Councilman Shine, as a pastor who's been laboring for over 20 years. I'm going to go on the record with this. There was a lady who we had helped my church for eight years, who was a transit, we're going to get it scraped, who was a transit on the street who we helped. She made asserted effort to tell a lie. She had given a donation, and three years later, she resented on that donation. Those are the facts. There's no pastor in this city that would have been arrested for that. I'm going to let the law take care of what it got to take care of, but there is nobody that's going to stop me, or any other minister, or any other person in this city that want to come down here and speak up, whether you be white or black, that want to speak up on issues concerning the city as a whole. I feel that it's a disconnect, that there's two sets of laws, and it shouldn't be. We are one community. So, why are you here, Pastor Mays? Because I'm tired of seeing, and that's why I got in touch with Alexandria Hooks, and Peter with the FBI, because this kind of behavior going to have to stop. Nobody scares Pastor Mays. I don't scare easily. Okay? That's the first thing we need to get understood. Because nothing that nobody can do to hurt me, and Councilman Shine, I'm going to get ready to go. But I do want to say this, that it's a sad day in the city of Shreveport, when people try to use influence and political power to try to shut people up from doing what is our constitutional right. So I have a problem with that. I'm tired of seeing black men die in this city. I'm tired of seeing, and Marvin is going to be able to speak to his own thing, but I'm speaking to my thing now. Every leader that comes before this council, that is concerned about people, I'm talking about 20 years' worth of work, 20 years' worth of work I've been doing. And then all of a sudden, one person who's a transit, who we've been helping for eight years, they would believe her over a person that's been doing this work with Reverend Martin, that's been doing this work with Reverend Tramell? So, we all know it's political. Let's just get that out there. It's political. And I knew that from the beginning, because there ain't a white pastor in this city, or a black pastor in this city, that you come and give a donation to, and that by you giving that donation, three years later, you can say, "I resent on that donation," and they will come after you. We all got pastors up there. That would never happen. So, to serve notice, dig up some old garbage. Because the garbage that you dig up, my Father, which is in heaven, he already done declared that no weapon, let's get this understood, that is formed against me, shall prosper, and every evil tongue that rises up shall be condemned. I ain't going nowhere. Thank you all so much. I'm going to continue to respect this council, as I always have done, and when there's issues that come up, that I need to address, when I see things that are not right, right, I'm going to speak out on that. And I know it makes people uncomfortable, but that's why we live in a democracy, to where you can disagree without being tortured politically, without having your name lied on. Everybody knows that this is a lie. So, with that being said, I appreciate it. I appreciate the time and the opportunity to come down here to voice our opinion. But, we have asked for, time and time again, Councilman Shine, you know this, a citizen review board, the people don't want that. And the reason why they don't want that, Councilman Shine, is that it opens up the avenue for ordinary people to look in some of these cases that's going on, and make a conscious decision on some of this excessive use of force. Nobody wants to deal with that. And it's saddened to me, I know, I know you cared before the legislature, that's credit due to you, but when it got to the Senate, they knocked it out the wall, because they said, "We can't have that." So if I'm lying, tell me I'm lying. I'm just telling the truth. There is a disconnect in this city. And I'm going to say this again, and I know some people are going to get mad, I'm going to take my seat when I say this, this. Is some folks mad at me right now for speaking up on our financial advisor? But I don't care, because right is right, and wrong is wrong. And you all have a fiduciary responsibility to serve the people. This is government plasm, plasma don't belong to no one individual. Nobody runs this house. The people run this house. That's what we got to get back to. That's why when election time come, we got to get people that still got that in their heart, that I serve the people. It is not because I'm the big boss. You have a responsibility to the people. And again, Pastor Mays ain't going nowhere. I'll be here again to talk about the Grigsby situation, even when you cross over into the next ministration, I'm going to be right here talking about it again, I'm going to talk about it until I can't talk about it no more. Because to damage a man's credibility, I know how it feels, after 20 years of work, to damage somebody's credibility, it's a crime shame to do so, based upon personal issues. And so I'm going to say, it's not personal, but it's personal. Because if you don't have no facts, it's personal. Thank you.
Pastor, before you go to your seat, Mr. Mayor, you want to comment on a couple of the things that the pastor said, you might want to tell him about the little bit of, well, the Grigsby situation is on its way to court, but you might want to lighten him, and since you're the head of the administration, and you actually the head of the Police Department, you want to say anything to him, or you want to?
I think everything that Pastor Mays has said, Mr. Shine speaks for itself.
Okay.
And I'm certainly that those specific issues that he referenced with the Police Department, I know that Chief Shaw and the staff will engage him, and we will address those as appropriate, but what Pastor Mays just said, I think speaks for itself and stands for itself.
All right. Chief, did you want to say anything? What he said?
Yes. I am well aware of the incident he's talking about on the bicycle. We have reached out to that young man's mother. Our captain called her just a day after that happened. And so we've been in contact with her, telling her out what she needs, what needs to be done to do a formal complaint. So she's been advised of that from us. Anything pending in court, I can't speak to it, so.
Okay. And I think his situation is probably pending in court at this time?
Yes, sir, it is. I can't speak to any of that.
Good.
That's why I didn't speak to it.
Okay. Any council member have anything that they would like to say in relation to, if not? Pastor, we appreciate you coming down.
Thank you, Councilor.
And we will now go to, Mr. Shine? Yes, sir.
I would add one thing.
Okay.
The thought that always comes to my mind when Pastor Mays speak, if you can't say amen, say ouch.
That's it.
Well, did I hear ouch? Ouch! Okay. Well, Councilwoman, you want to respond to maybe the ouch that he hit you with?
Well, actually, I mean, with the Grigsby situation, I mean, entering, I mean, it's my understanding that he's now filing a lawsuit, which that's why I really tried to play the middleman, the peacemaker, or the mother hen, or whatever you call it. You know, I was hoping that we could have reconsidered. Councilman Shine, I heard you remark, making some remarks toward, it was yesterday at our meeting, and I noticed you were willing, I think it had to do with, I think it had to do with the ABO card. So we were addressing the idea of, you know, bringing the employee back. It's a good employee, and that contradicted what actually happened with the Grigsby situation. I mean, you highly suggested it, and I agreed with it, that the young man that had actually fired the young lady, because I think it had to do with the selling of alcohol or something at the store. But the one thing you referenced, Councilman Shine, and I agreed with you, is that if she was a great employee, the least we could do is allow her a probationary period to actually come back and, you know, work. And the first thing that came to my mind, you know, was the fact that, but yet, Grigsby, all that he did for the city of Shreveport, and of course, you know, this council felt like, and it was stated even by you, Councilman Shine, you know, there are some things you have to, you do that you have to be willing to suffer the consequences for. But I just felt like, you know, the firing, what we have to be reminded of prior to the name-calling, and I'm not excusing that, because it is unprofessional, but prior to the name-calling, he was fired. He was already fired. And so I saw that as being a situation whereby, if you come here right now, Reverend Mays, and you jump on me, and you beat me down, and I just go out, and I don't do anything, I don't come up trying to swing or say anything, I just let you beat me down. That was pretty much the situation with Grigsby. We beat him up, well, this council beat him up, real bad, and we didn't expect him to retaliate in no form or fashion. That is cruelty. That is abusive. So again, you know, I figure like, if we're going to reconsider something as simple as reinstating an ABO card to an employee that might have been illegally selling alcohol or whatever, and not reconsider this situation with Grigsby, something is wrong with that. I think we do need to go back, and I'm not contradicting what, but I have to express that when you did that yesterday, I was reminded of the Grigsby situation.
Right. Well, I appreciate that, but there's a lawsuit, and I wouldn't want us to get too far into that, because you'd be surprised, things are taped, and before you know it, they'll have you coming down there.
I got you.
And because, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to say, I agree with you, that it's time for us to move on. If there was any beating up of anybody, I want to make it clear, because I don't know how this is going to come out in court, I was not a part of that. If the council beat him up, it must have been one of them days when I wasn't here, because I don't believe in beating up people, but I do agree with you, Mayor. I mean, that's what life and public life is all about. You do your job, you get paid for it, and if you continue to work well and good, if you don't, hey, we're all grown and big folks, and we move on. So I really think that you made the right decision at this point. You got to move on for the benefit of the city. We can't let one person, whether it's me, or you, or my good friend Dale O'Donnell, who I've been knowing for a long time, we can't let one person hold the progress of the city up. Doesn't matter how much we like him, doesn't matter how much we feel like they have been wrong, or how much we like him, but I want to say that I think you're doing the right thing. And I would say to the council, and Sammy, I do practice a little Saturday evening law, when there is a court case going on, you need to be careful what you say in public. You need to be careful what you say in private. You need to be careful what you even say on the phone. And the mayor knows that our good friend in Detroit, you even need to be careful about what emails you send out. So again, I agree with you on that, and I'm not going to say anymore about that. I'm going to ask Sammy to come forth. Sammy, would you please come forth?
Thank you. Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard's apartment M110, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. That's the reason I came today, I had to write it out.
Good, Sammy.
If I didn't trust my mouth.
Oh, Sammy.
Well, I come before this council today to say a very, very big thank you to Broadmoor Baptist Church for rethinking the decision about expanding the parking lot over on Cleeman and Atlantic, because I was very concerned about the people there, and I'll tell you why. I think it would have probably put Judy Smith, as well as a lot of other people, out of their homes, and I was very scared for these people, and felt like it was just wrong and ridiculous. The reason I say it is, I felt like maybe Broadmoor Baptist didn't really seem to think much on this situation. If they didn't really seem to care about it, or if it didn't mean anything to them, at least it did to me, and to other people, who live over there on those two streets. And I spent a lot of time writing this out, because I needed the careful words to say what I needed to say. See, the people over there, they have spent years in their homes. They take care of their homes, and pay bills like everybody else does. And I can see why they love their homes very much. They were probably scared of being put out of their homes, and they didn't want that. And Don Hamley and I even went by there today on our way to CC's Pizza, and for me to buy a book at Barnes &amp; Noble. And I went with Brian Rowell just the other day on the weekend, when we went to have breakfast over at the McDonald's, and we kind of saw what was going on, too. There should be at least maybe another solution for the situation, maybe some kind of a little compromise, and if that's not to be, then... There should be at least maybe another solution for the situation, maybe some kind of a little compromise, and if that's not to be, then the expansion parking lot just needs to continue being dropped. I know they've already dropped the situation. I just felt like maybe nobody would come to speak on behalf of the situation, that's why I'm doing it today. Um, I also wanted to say that they just need to let it go, and of course, I don't even go to Broadmoor Baptist Church, but I do see that they are building a worship center over there. I'd have no problem with that because I know that that would mean a lot to them, since another church turned their fellowship hall into a worship center. Plus, they added remodeling their offices and adding an elevator. And if Broadmoor Baptist really cares a whole lot, and I hope that they really do, it, they'll just let it go and just forget about that, and if something else can come up in the place of that situation, then whatever support there is, I'm sure that that will work, but I think when they get done with their worship center, it'll be good, and besides, when Don and I went to C.C.'s Pizza today, we also went to Barnes and Noble because I bought another book. And I showed it earlier, Stay Mad For Life, thank you.
All right, Sammy, thank you, uh. Mr. Kenneth Penn, did I get that right? Where's Kenneth?
I think maybe she's gonna-
Uh, Mr. Penn is not here, uh. Brother Marvin T. Muhammad. Brother Marvin? That's your new good friend now, brother. Sammy there, that's our good friend.
Oh, he is, indeed.
Okay.
Uh, Marvin Muhammad, fourteen thirteen Clay. Uh, first of all, I wanna say it's indeed an honor and a privilege to be before the council, uh, as I, I came here today. First of all, let me address something that, that you said earlier, uh, Councilman Shine, because you're absolutely right, we should be, always be very cautious and and thinking ahead of time about what we say publicly, privately, whether email, phone calls, or whatever. You know, my, my spiritual father, the Most Honorable Elijah Muhammad teaches me that we should think five times before we speak. He also says that eighty-five percent of what we think is wrong. So with that as a, as a, as a measuring stick, you can see where we might always say something that, that might be taken out of context. But with, with that, but, but with that being said, uh, uh, truth must be spoken, uh, to power regardless of whom or what. And when you take up on a case or a cause, you should always take up on that case or that cause without, without looking back. We should always be looking to endure to the end, and that's what, exactly what we will be doing, fighting to the end. But with, but with, uh, with that being said, of course, several weeks ago, we, we have said at the city council meeting that we would not let the Harrison landfill, uh, be swept aside.
Right.
And unfortunately, I sat here, uh, for the last two and a half hours, and I didn't hear one mention of the Harrison, uh, landfill to my regret. So I'm happily to say that this past Saturday, uh, at eleven, uh, AM, the citizens of the, uh, MLK community along with the Nation of Islam, we had a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful opportunity for the citizens of the MLK community to be empowered to vote, to voice their concerns that Harrison Materials Management is still being a hazard to that community specifically and to the city of Shreveport as a whole. Uh, so, uh, lastly, I came also to say I, I do wanna thank the Honorable Mayor Cedric Glover, uh, for his wonderful, uh, contribution to the Corey Mallett Unowary banquet, uh, that, that we put on, uh, later on that evening. Uh, he actually, uh, sent a proclamation, uh, in honor of that. Uh, actually, our work is on the heels of several years of work that he has been doing with his women's, uh, with his, uh, with his, uh, commission on Corey, uh, Mallett, so we are grateful, thankful of that. And, uh, student minister Nuri Mohammed personally, uh, wanted me to thank you, knowing you was out of town, thank you for making, uh, July nineteenth, uh, Nuri Mohammed Day. And I wanna give a special thanks to, uh, City Councilwoman Rose McCullough, District A, for attending not only the Unowary banquet uh, on behalf of the city of Shreveport, but also his Sunday lecture that he did. Uh, uh, Chairman Shine, I'm sorry to say, I was a jaguar before I was a tiger, that he done at Southern University.
I can, you know, it's hard for me, Marvin, but I can forgive you for, for making that-
Forgive me.
Yeah, I can forgive you, but I don't want Sam to hear me though.
Well, you know, well, you know, being from the MLK community is very, you know, we are very special because you can actually go from ECE
Right.
to all the way to your first two years of college without leaving the neighborhood. So it was, so it was just so easy just to continue on that path.
Well, I don't mind you saying it, I was one of the ones who, and as a grandma, I had to kinda hold my head down, but I was one, one of the ones, uh, I guess maybe thirty years ago or better who petitioned, uh, Southern University and that board to, uh, erect the campus on the, on the
Oh, wonderful, wonderful.
Cause they, cause I knew we needed it.
Indeed, well, my position, my position is that, you know, the HBCUs, we, we are not so much in competition with one another-
That's right, that's exactly right.
That we complement one another.
That's correct.
And I know Councilman Sam Jenkins, who is a graduate of, of our wonderful law center down in Baton Rouge-
That's right.
I know he, I know he, uh, has that same, uh, feeling, probably outside of, uh, the Bayou Classic.
Right, and I love it anyway, um, Marvin, I love, I love it anyway.
Things get kinda, things get kinda personal, and, uh, you know, usually I'm hiding somewhere because, you know, I have friends on both sides of the aisle and, and, and I, I go to the grammar side, I have my grammar t-shirt on, I go to the southern side, I have my southern- But nevertheless, again, we want to thank the mayor, we wanna thank, uh, Councilwoman, uh, McCullough for, for their wonderful contribution, uh, to our weekend.
Thank you, Marvin.
Thank you.
Councilman Shine?
Yes?
If you allow me to, before, um, Brother Muhammad go, returns to his seat, um, he said he was a little bit disappointed because he hadn't heard anything regarding the landfill. And I don't know if he based that on the fact that as our chairperson, you said you would be addressing it at each council meeting, um, some weeks ago. But I also, uh, was fortunate enough to participate in the rally that was held by the Nation of Islam along with the MLK Coalition on Saturday as well. And just know that you're, you know, you, um, I served with honor, it was a pleasure. And I want to also thank the other councilman, uh, Jeff Efferson, I believe, uh, four of the councilmen that actually signed the resolution for the Corey Mallett.
Absolutely, we do wanna thank them as well.
But I had the opportunity this past, uh, week, last week, to travel to, uh, New Orleans to the, they hosted the National Association of County Officials, of course, it's a county official conference, which I participated in during the fifteen years I was on the cattle parers commission. So they were always like family, so I always followed the, the National Association of County Officials, uh, which it also take in city elected officials as well, it just, it's just not geared to, uh, police jury or commissioners. But, uh, in attending this, uh, conference, I had the opportunity to actually, uh, uh, talk with Mary Landrew. And based on a recent meeting two weeks prior to this conference, uh, with some of the citizens in the MLK area, after the July eighth meeting with Senator Tarver, um, we met and they were a little bit disappointed because they had been told that the landfill was closed. And of course, the next day, July ninth, we actually had citizens that rode by, took pictures, and actually had evidence that the gate was not closed, that, you know, trucks were still going up into the landfill. But in traveling to, uh, the national conference, uh, and this particular conference, it, it's made up of over six or seven thousand members all over the United States of America, it also networked with other associations as well, and one of those other associations is Navco, and I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I believe Sam Jenkins once served, served as president of Navco, was it Navco or Nobco?
Nobco, Nobco.
Nobco, okay, but anyway, Navco, um, was actually there, and I was able to, through Navco, meet with Senator Landrew personally. I did post it on, on, on Facebook, and I actually presented her a packet that was requested through the citizens of the July, uh, ninth meeting. Uh, uh, they presented a letter, uh, from Senator Mary Landrew requesting all, any and all information in relations to or regarding the landfill, so in attending this conference on last week, I actually had an opportunity to actually put the packet of information requested and probably previously sent. Uh, but I actually had the opportunity as the District A representative to actually place it in her hands. And of course, her concerns were, well, how does the mayor feel about it? Well, how do you feel about it? How does the, how does the council members feel about it? And of course, my response was, at this point in time, at the peak of this landfill, it's not about what I want, what you want, or whomever wants. It's about what, meeting the needs of the people at this time. The landfill is at its peak, uh, during the rally, there was evidence by the Nation of Islam and the, and the Coalition and other citizens that were there, I mean, although we had the facial mask as a symbol, you know, um, I was, I was actually happy that I had my face mask on because there, along with myself and the participants in the rally, the odor was ridiculous. Um, I got a call last night at nine o'clock, nine forty-five, the landfill was on fire and the smell was ridiculous, and I wanted that to go on record to, uh, Mayor Glover. But as a result of attending this conference on last week and actually speaking with Senator Mary Landrew and putting the packet of information involving the Harrison land, uh, landfill in her hand, um, the NACO, uh, which is a part of, I mean, the Navco Association, which is a part of the NACO Conference, they have, and that should be in your office, uh, Mayor Glover, I was hoping that they could have faxed it in time enough for you to present it today. But they also wrote a letter, uh, to Governor Jindal of support, supporting, uh, not only the mayor's, uh, letter request to Jindal and, uh, supporting the resolution by this council, they're also supporting, um, that, that request by a resolution and a letter. So it has gone national, and some, uh, NACO, the National Association of County Officials, again, it's made up over six thousand, seven thousand members, they are aware. And so is Navco, and I want to personally go on record, I thank Navco, uh, for supporting the mayor and the efforts of this council uh, to meet the needs of the, of the citizens in District A. And, uh, again, I appreciate all that you do, Marvin, along with all of the MLK, uh, so, uh, citizens in the MLK area, but this is not just an MLK problem right now because our water supply is right in proximity of this landfill. And, uh, this, this affects the entire city of Shreveport. So it's so important that all citizens get involved, uh, at this point. So I just wanted you all to be aware of, uh, that was my reason for going to the conference, it wasn't a, a, a relaxation, a period for me. I actually went down like I normally do when I attend conferences, and that is to handle the business of the city of Shreveport as well as District A. So if you have any other questions, uh, concerning my visit or part of this conference, I'd be glad to share that with you, Mayor Glover, you can, if not now, be expecting that letter from Navco to be in your office, and hopefully, we can put it on record. Thank you.
Councilwoman, uh, McCullough, we appreciate that, uh, Marvin, we always appreciate you coming down.
If I could, if I could say this real fast, as a follow-up to, to Councilwoman McCullough, you know, our, our words, uh, were meant to say that, uh, and as a position as chairman of the council, uh, Councilman Joe Shine, uh, he said several months ago, maybe, maybe three meetings ago, he said that the Harrison landfill will be a priority of this council.
Right.
I don't know what that meant, he, of course, he's here, he can, he can, he can speak into that. Uh, I took that, of course, meaning that it would be something that would be mentioned every time that we came here at Government Plaza. Uh, that was, that was, that was the extent of my, of, of, of my understanding of his words. And it's, uh, and, and although it's not on the agenda per se, it's definitely something that I believe that needs to be dealt with. I believe it's, I believe it's a, a cruel, uh, uh, reality that, that, uh, Micah Harrison and Harrison Materials Management that, that they're said they are closing, he has one permit that we know isn't, isn't, uh, doesn't aspire until October the twenty-third, I believe. Uh, there's allegations of, and words and rumors that he actually have two other, uh, more permits that need to be thoroughly investigated. And we do know that he is still, uh, accepting waste from throughout the region, that is, that is still, uh, 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 bringing havoc uh, to, to the MLK community. Uh, we know that he has practiced the C, we do know that he hasn't been truthful, we know that the DEQ has historically, uh, has a, have shown inability or disregard, blatant disregard for controlling and regulating Harrison, uh, Material Management. And they have a blatant disregard for the MLK citizens and the citizens of, uh, the city of Shreveport as a whole. So again, the rally was again, uh, is, was a effort to keep the exposure there, to keep the pressure there, and to say that we would not just be blinded by a continuous show of, uh, smoke and mirrors. We're not going for the rabbit in the hat. We're saying that we're not gonna accept anything from any state or city officials that make us believe that something is being done when nothing actually is being done. Because as it stands today, nothing has changed. Let me say this again, nothing has changed from the daily day operations since, since we have started. So, and so, and with that being said, the citizens will still be pressing forward, there's other plans in the works, and we will be on the battleground to the end.
Marvin, I appreciate you coming down, I have been told and, and, uh, that, uh, Senator Greg Tarver has another meeting on the twenty-fourth. I didn't wanna just jump out there, but I do know the mayor will probably be there, uh, representing the city, and I know, uh, Councilwoman McCullough will-
I haven't, I haven't received my invitation in the mail yet, but, but I, but I'll definitely be there then.
Right, I, I have not received mine, but I, I hope you and I can drive up about the same time, we'll walk in together. But, uh, I will be there, but, um, I, I believe the mayor will probably be representing the city. Sometimes I jump out there, but I didn't wanna jump out there in front of the mayor, and I didn't wanna get run over. But, uh, I will be there, and I, and I believe the mayor's probably got an invitation from, um, uh, Senator Tarver, who has, uh, been a legislator when me and I both were probably boys growing up. So, uh, uh, that will be Thursday at, I wanna say, five o'clock at the, uh, what is it, Mayor DeSantis?
Jesse Instone, size lecture hall, Southern University, Shreveport.
Yeah, Southern, Southern University.
Published in the Shreveport Times, Councilman Shine.
Right, so I know that would be a long drawn out meeting, but I know we will have some, uh, uh, actions that will be taken there. And Marvin, I appreciate it, and I'd like for you to keep on coming down, talking about that landfill until, uh, we get something done, whether, uh, uh, this administration is there or not, or whether this council is here or not. I know you'll still be on the Cup Road, uh, uh, however long it takes, so please continue to come down and, and make this an issue that we all need to be concerned about, because we all drank water out of the same place. You know, I might not live on the Cup Road, cause I made my living up there for, oh, oh, for a while, uh, I just didn't get a chance to teach the mayor over there. Uh, I was kinda waiting around to see if I could get him at Green Oaks, and come to find out, he, he, he met Oliver Jenkins somewhere. And the next thing I knew, he and Oliver was in school together. So, uh, I don't know whether he was running from me and trying to run toward Oliver or not. But, uh, Marvin, keep coming down, and we appreciate it.
All right.
All right, Mr. Penn, Kenneth Penn.
Good evening. Um, my name's Kenneth Penn, uh, twenty-eight twenty-two, Frostwood Drive is my address. Uh, and I consider it very much a privilege actually to be, be in this council, because many cities don't have an esteemed council that, uh, tries to perform as, as well as you all do.
Thank you.
Uh, it only takes a second to go on YouTube, you'll see people jumping across desks, wrestling and fighting, you know, all overseas. But enough of that, um, I, I would like to, you know, give a slight shout out to, uh, uh, late Councilman Bowman. Because my mother, who's in her eighties now, I'm, I'm, thank God that she's still here. Some years ago, she reached out to Councilman Bowman, who, she's not even in her district. And Ms. Bowman helped my mother with a situation, I'm gonna be brief about it and just cut to the chase. She helped my mother with a situation that was going on in her district, uh, that was causing some disturbance with her. Notably, that it was not her district. But Ms. Bowman put forth an effort and got that issue resolved. And then called my mother afterwards to make sure that it was resolved. That's the kinda people that I like sitting on this council. That's the kind of people that I like sitting on this council. Mr. Webb might know me by the address I just gave, because I contacted not only him, but the Shreveport Police back in the late month of March. And simply to say that I had a problem with noise. If I asked for a show of hands, I would like to see, but I'm not there, I actually want this. Who in this room would want a full-sized Harley-Davidson coming down between your house, you and your next door neighbor, rumbling your walls and shaking your windows? I called with this issue in accordance to the city ordinance fifty-eight, I think it starts at about twenty-nine, goes all the way to thirty-two, somewhere up in there. And everybody tried to treat my home like it was a traffic issue. I don't appreciate that. We've had a lot of people in this United States that have lost their homes due to bad mortgages and such being issued. It's hard to get your mortgage paid, especially when you're on workman's comp like myself. I've sat over here patiently with two bad vertebrae in my neck, I'm in intense pain now. But because I have a nine-year-old daughter whose wall is being shaken, the last time I came before this conference, it was on a goodwill mission. I escorted with my good friend Craig Lee and he gave a proclamation that was signed by the President of the United States concerning C.C. Antoine. And we introduced ourselves and we have a small embroidery business. And my family was introduced, my daughter came up, and she even took a picture sitting in the chairman's seat when we left, okay? And we like to expose her to the greater higher efforts of what she achieved. And it was acknowledged that she's a Magnus School student. She worked very hard to keep her grades up. She goes to South Highlands, which you said yourself was one of the top schools in the state. Sometimes for that age, I have to cut it off sometimes because she's working so hard trying to make sure her homework is done at such a young age. But I make sure that she has a childhood in place.
Right.
You know, I make sure that, you know, she just went to art camp at the exhibit building because she loves art and painting, you know, and the like and the such. So I make sure that she's occupied and enjoy a healthy childhood along with her studies and not just emphasize just on the academics. But she works hard at her academics. It's not easy for her sometimes. And thank God, I'm at the pace where I can keep up with her. And like, anything going on at a school, I make sure I'm there. Because I had to acknowledge to a teacher, I can follow her all the way through college, you know, whatever she needs, but I'm trying to let her satellite on her own as much as possible. Like anybody would want their child to be able to study, you know, because she has that environment, all this in place. But her bedroom and my bedroom is on the side of this neighbor who chooses to keep a Harley-Davidson in his backyard. Now, I don't have any problem with motorcycle riders. We have several Harley-Davidsons that you hear crank up all the time in our neighborhood. I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is when my walls get to vibrating, okay? And I reached out to Councilman Webb and nobody wanted to guide me, I had to do all the homework myself, okay? And I brought up the issue of a noise control officer. Nobody wants to tell me even who he is, you know? Nobody wants to bring that into the picture. And I was told that, well, what do you want me to do? Make the guy stand out there and park out there until the guy cranks it up? I said, no, go over and investigate it, whether it'll be against his rights. But my rights don't seem to be an issue. The rights of my daughter, I started to bring her here, but I said, no, I'm going to let her enjoy her summer. She don't have to be a part of this drama, you know? Because there's enough when she wakes up and comes telling me that, what was that? When there's a rumbling on her walls, her bedroom wall, you know, the same room she'll be studying in in about a week, okay? Now, guy has a garage. I acknowledge, I say, well, I don't have a problem with hearing a Harley-Davidson crank as long as it's in front of my house, you know? Warm it up reasonably like the rest of them do. Go about your merry way. Now, if you have a garage, which he has, you have an old car in there, go put your car in storage, put your motorcycle in your garage. I acknowledge that. Nobody wanted to hear that. I've been ridiculed, belittled, pundit, poked, made fun of by not only Shreveport's finest Police Department, but I felt that from you when you told me, what am I supposed to do? Make the guy sit there? And no one wants to address this in accordance to the law, which is on my side, which is why this was written. You sit here, and one of the things that I was glad to hear when I first came in was that, oh, and by the way, I recorded it all and put it on DVD. A good friend of mine, I have a history in the recording industry, and I used to run a small recording studio. I know very much about decibels. I reached out to a friend of mine who's worked all the way into the movie industry. He's located here locally in the city. And I asked him, what can I do without setting up an entire studio? He told me exactly what to do. I did it, I recorded it. Because the noise control officers don't seem to be able to make it to my home. So here's a DVD for anybody that's interested, then you can take it through there and wash it through. But that DVD on that desk is about as far as I got to the piece in my house. I'm about to semi-retire next year, I'm past fifty. And I don't want to have to move, and let me change it like this, I'm not going to be forced out of my house because it's hard to get a mortgage, it's hard to move and get down payments and move when you've secured your home and secured your land as such. And you're doing the right thing. You're doing the right thing. Just trying to have a family and a household. It's a shame that I should have to come down here and address this issue before the full council because I couldn't get an answer. And this been since last March. And I sat patiently because I knew sooner or later, because I believe this guy was injured or something because he wasn't riding a bike, but he was still starting it in his backyard. I took these measures inside my home and they still, it's not across the property line as the ordinance states. And there's an issue in here, treating my house like a traffic. Motorcycles aren't exempt from anything unless they're on the street. The alleyway between my home, the grass between my home is not a street. His backyard is not a street. See, and these are the kind of issues where people drag their feet and allow things to go on and until people come out their house, who are in a rage, and then they want to shoot up each other and you see them on the news. See, I try to exhaust all limits of the law, you know? It is bad when you pay a mortgage on workman's comp. My wife has had surgery. I sat in her house a few months ago recovering from the flu, just a few months ago, and I had to lay in my sick bed and listen to this rumbling of my walls. It not only vibrates the walls, but it also emits far in excess of what the law says is permitted to cross my property line, which you all have worked, or your predecessors have worked so diligently to put into these ordinance. I sat there just long enough just to say, okay, it takes a lot of efforts and motions and follow-ups to get these into place because you know people want peace in their home. I feel for those people in that landfill, next to that landfill. I don't live near that, but my heart goes out to people like that, you know? And if you can't settle a man's peace in his own home so this eight-year-old daughter, about to be nine, can study to become a prominent citizen in this city, you know, you got people leaving. A young lady came up here, she's about to leave. For some reason or another, more professionalism, you know? It's bad. I don't want to be forced out of my home. I'm not going to be forced out of my home. Because one of my favorite passages is, nothing happens in God's world by mistake. Because I've heard a lot of stuff here that's pretty relevant to me. One of my favorites, no weapon formed against me. That's one of my favorites. That's one of my favorites.
Mr. Penn, all right, I'm going to turn it over to your councilman in that area and then we'll see if any other council members have any remarks, but we appreciate you coming down. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I recall your phone call very well. And I did contact, I do not recall if it was Chief Huddleston or Chief Goodwin. They probably remember the call because I remember you telling me that he was playing music on his radio.
That came afterwards. That came after a bullying effect.
Nine-year-old child didn't even hear the words that were being said.
The profane, the full version of Snoop Dogg coming through an eight-year-old child's window.
Let me say, and I did call the chief and they returned my phone call telling me that they spoke to your neighbor.
Yes.
And that I wasn't going to have any more problem. That's the last I heard.
Right.
But I didn't just do nothing. I want you to know that.
Been waiting since May.
And I even asked you, one of the best things you can do is if you know your neighbor, go over there and have a man-to-man talk with him.
Anybody that would pull up a motorcycle and play Snoop Dogg and trade songs, explicit lyrics.
I just want you to come down here and leave the impression to the other council members or the public that I did nothing.
Well, you're the one that told me, or Councilman Webb, you said, well, what am I supposed to do? Let the man sit out there and the noise control officer sit there until he cranks it?
Right.
And I asked you, why don't you get the man to actually investigate it as the ordinance says he should be?
Well, and I did. I had the police go out there.
I'm telling you what you told me.
And I was just thinking that, you know, the departments are very, you know, they're very polite to be responsive to our requests.
Right, they do that.
But as legislative body, I mean, we don't have the administrative authority to tell a noise control officer where to be or...
And I was told by the chief that we probably wouldn't have any more trouble out of him because, and I have heard nothing else said.
Well, that's because I've been dormant. But I've been dealing with it because, like as I say, this guy evidently was on some of the same status I've been on. He had a cast on his leg, he wasn't riding his bike, but he was still cranking it. And I was just being patient as my mother taught me to be, you know? I was being very patient. And I said, when this gets towards the school year, which it has, all of a sudden, this thing has funneled into a head on because now he's riding it and coming between the house. See? And like, as I say, I got my own proof. Now, you can pass it amongst each other, you can take it in the bag and do whatever you want to do with it. You can have it, I have plenty of copies of this.
Mr. Penn, I was going to tell you, I was going to tell you to give a copy to the city attorney over there. Ms. Scott. Ms. Scott will check it out and look at it from a legal standpoint.
Okay.
And then she will get in contact with the chief.
Okay.
And from there, they will look at a solution.
Okay.
Now, and I know both, both of the chiefs, they are very compassionate.
I think I have a chief, I really do.
Right. They are concerned about what goes on in your neighborhood and...
Some of his officers don't, because they gave me the brush-off.
I know, but hold on just one minute. Hold on just one minute. Okay, hold on just one minute. They would look at, I wish you had a copy too so you could also give it to the mayor, but you know, his contact person would be the city attorney. And we do have citizens who are kind of hard-headed from time to time that, you know, sometimes it takes more than, and the chief would tell you, sometimes it takes more than one visitation from the police department in order to solve your problem. But now, I'm going to ask you to do this. If your problem has not been solved in the next couple of weeks, I would ask you to come back down.
Okay.
And I'm not the mayor, but I guess I've been down here so long, we don't generally let problems go unsolved.
I hope not.
And sometimes it takes a little while and I'm not speaking on behalf of the mayor there, but we do have a tendency to solve the problems that come before the city. And because the mayor tell you, we do have citizens who are sweet as they can do, but it just takes two or three visitations because sometimes mom and daddy have to do that, you know, with us. I might have been one of them boys that achieved that my mama had to visit and my dad had to visit with me two or three times. But you can rest assured, right, you can rest assured that we will get at this problem and we will solve it because you don't, you don't need to be living next door to somebody.
It becomes a hell of a time.
Who's going to cause that kind of problem to you just because they want to ride their motorcycle up and down. But give a copy of that to Ms. Terry Scott. She will play it. She will get with the chief and you have to understand this. Unless we let the chief know what's going on, sometimes he might not know what his officer out there on the street is doing because they're human beings.
Right.
And we will all make mistakes, we will all veer a little bit. So would you please do that? Give it to Ms. Scott, Ms. Scott will get with the chief back there and they'll take a look at it. And I can guarantee you that we will eventually solve that problem.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Penn, for coming down.
Can I just give you two quick, just real quick footnotes?
Okay.
Okay. I did take this to Chief Goodwin at one of the first initial contacts.
Okay.
And it filtered through. And because of the scientifics of it, if I may say it in that terminology, they were constantly, the officer on the beat, you might say, kept telling me that they couldn't do anything about it because they didn't have anything to measure the sound with. Well, I'm going to just say this and I'm going to do as I've been instructed and prayerfully, this will get resolved because my daughter does need to get to her studies and her rest. I do too, you know? But it doesn't take any mentality at all to know that when you've got so much of a narrow gap and you have a motorcycle that's a third of the size of that gap coming between there, that that's too much noise. You don't need an instrument to know that. But I will say that when this is resolved, it needs to go just beyond just the officers because they, the way I got handled by some of them, because I have, I'm like Pastor Mays, I have good friends that are officers, you know? And I stand by them a hundred percent, you know, a hundred percent. But when you have people that flick you off like a flea while you're looking at your eight-year-old daughter's eyes, that tends to make you want to bite, like my mother, you say, bite a nail in two. That's hard. But the scientifics of it is what they stood and hid behind.
Look, I understand that, but as long as we have people who are, and let me say this, you will have pastors and priests that will do the same thing. That's just a part of being human, but what I'm telling you now is, we want to get at your problems.
I believe that.
We want to get at the situation.
I believe that.
And I can't help and, you know, how the officer reacted to that.
Right, right.
I was a teacher for a long time. And I were teachers who didn't react the way that they should have reacted to little Johnny.
Right.
You got, hear this lady the other day, kill her son, kill her daughter and put them to, so you're going to have that, but please, right now, we're going to end this. Take her, your, your, your information and get her number, and you might want to go by the office and sit down and talk and she will be getting together with the chief. And if it doesn't happen in a reasonable time, come back again. Because we're going to end this right here. We can keep on going for hours on that.
Right, right.
But come back. So I appreciate you coming down. And who do we have next?
Before we let him go, also, Mr. Penn.
Mr. Penn.
Also, I want to ask you to make direct contact with Deputy Chief Huddleston as well.
Okay.
Because I'm, and listening to your comments, it raises my concern because, you know, we have had a direct focus on issues of noise. We have lots of young folks in this city who love to put in amplified sound systems into their vehicles right around the city. And that represents a challenge because they are moving targets.
Right.
What you have presented to us is a stationary target. And if we're having...
What you have presented to us is a stationary target, uh, and if we're having difficulty being able to effectively address noise issues for a stationary target, then I know, I have, that the moving ones, uh, become just that much more difficult, so I'm gonna ask that, that, that you have a conversation with Deputy Chief Huddleston, I wanna get an idea of who some of the folks are, that you have engaged, and to, to review and evaluate the response that we've given, uh, and to review the material that you, uh, have in terms of recordings, because not only, uh, can we use, uh, decimeters to be able to, uh, to, to measure sound, you also have some, uh, some provisions within established law that allow you to be able to use distance, if you can hear a sound at a certain distance, that lets you know that it also constitutes a decibel level that would be, uh, within the range of violation as well, so, uh, know that, that you have obviously the attention of this council, uh, and you have my attention as well, and, and between the city attorney and Deputy Chief Huddleston, we're gonna engage this situation and see if we can't come to some resolution of it for you. And, and if I gave the, um, um, uh, perception that you did nothing, that was not my intention, because there was one incident with the same exact neighbor that he came to my rescue on, and, and, and resolved that.
We appreciate it, God bless you, we love you, all right, uh, council members, I think we've had everything said today, uh, uh, if so, we will now, uh...
Communication from council members.
Well, I thought we'd had them on.
No, I hadn't got them.
Okay, well, go on, Councilwoman.
Um, Ms. Featherston, I'm, I need for your department to, um, I've visited with Ms. Gloria Nelson on, uh, Iroquois Drive, I think it's four fifty-three, four fifty, regarding her water bill. Um, I was able to go by and intercept water bills for February through May, uh, two thousand fourteen, and of course, there was a problem with the leakage, I think somebody, they came out, I showed a receipt of one thousand eight hundred dollars, but I wanted to, I had requested through your department to get me a copy of her, uh, the high usage, her water bills between May through October of two thousand thirteen. Now, her February bill was thirty-nine dollars, her April bill was fifty, well, February to March was thirty-nine dollars, and then April, uh, fifty-six dollars and thirty cents, May fifty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents, and, uh, she has this fear or anxiety of it going up even more, um, but I just need to see what, what her actually usage was prior to the months of February and May, and of course, I, I did show a receipt of one thousand eight hundred dollars where a leakage, I don't know who did the repair, but so, and it wasn't her as the resident, I don't know who did it, but she showed me a receipt where repair had been done for one thousand eight hundred dollars, but her concern is that her water bill is going up ten dollars more, and she's, you know, she's...
What, what, what was, what was the address again?
Four, I think it's four fifty or four fifty-three, her name is Gloria Nelson.
Okay.
And she lives on Iroquois, Iroquois Drive.
Okay, I think I've seen some correspondence on that.
Right, and so, uh, I've been by on two or three occasions, you know, but right now I'm having a problem interpreting her entire bill.
Okay.
And I wanted, I wanted to just ask you if you would look into that for me.
Absolutely.
Also, Mr. Stone Cypher, I, I mean, Stat, Statline, I'm sorry, Statline, Statliner, the situation with Mr. Dexter, John Dexter, and the young lady that did the, come on, Dale, what was it?
The abandonment at Fairway.
Abandonment, uh, Mr. Dexter has been maintaining and cutting the property, although it's split between the two of them as owners now, and Mr. Dexter has a, has a concern, um, with not having anything in writing to reflect or show that he or his neighbor has, now has ownership of this property, and so, his, uh, his request or his, his, uh, his response to me today was, you know, I can't keep cutting this property and maintaining this property if there's no evidence that it, that I own it, so I've checked with, uh, Dale Sibley in regards to that, and I'm, I'm thinking that Dale is gonna be getting with you, but I just wanted to kinda bring it before you today in the meeting, so that we can get with Mr. Dexter, you would, if you would contact Mr. Dexter and let him know if there's any documentation to reflect that he actually has ownership.
I have spoken with Mr. Dexter and told him that that ownership recordation will be, uh, with the Caddo Parish Tax Assessor, but I will get him something in writing to tell him, uh, exactly who he needs to contact regarding the ownership.
Would you also send one to the other property owner as well?
Yes, ma'am, sure will.
Like, is it Ms. Kelly, or?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, would you send a copy to Ms. Kelly as well?
Surely.
Thank you so kindly.
Sure.
All right.
Uh, yes, sir.
Uh, some communications, I was hoping Mr. Harris would still be in here.
Is Mr. Harris still here?
He stepped out to do a live shot, uh, regarding the, uh, the ordinance sixty-seven you guys just passed.
Dale, maybe you can help me with it. About, about a month ago, we, uh, approved an ordinance to convert that four-way stop sign back to a two-way stop sign. I, uh, Mr. Harris was on vacation during our last council meeting, so I didn't get to find out anything, I texted him yesterday, but...
When to get the timing, when it'll be.
I didn't get a response, I called the traffic engineer, and they know nothing about it, so...
So when are we gonna actually get the signs?
Yeah, has the work order been issued, or, you know, where are we at?
Let me get that for you.
Okay.
Okay, Dale, if you and Art don't mind, I'm gonna...
I just had one thing right before we call it a day, um, I did wanna recognize, there was a, a tragic loss of a, a young life in, uh, in Shreveport recently, the Moss family, uh, is a, a family who, uh, goes to church in District B, and had a young daughter who was battling with, uh, fluid on the brain for a long time, and, um, some medical conditions, and she lost, lost that battle, so we do wanna send our condolences out to the Moss family and, and recognize this difficult time for them.
Okay, now, Dale, if you and Art don't mind, we're gonna reconvene this council meeting back into a regular session, and I'm gonna say, council meeting adjourned, now if some of y'all wanna stay around like we do at church and talk a little bit?
Yeah.
Uh, you're welcome to do that.